Thank you, Madam President. We are live.
All right, thank you. It is 6:02 on Tuesday, October 6th. My name is Elisa McCallis, and I'm going to call to order the regular school board meeting of the Anchorage School District. We have all board members present through this hybrid meeting with members Mitchell and Bellamy in person, and myself, member Hildy, member Marsette, member Donley, and member Holloman zooming in. Dr. Bishop is also present in the boardroom as well. Next up is our flag salute, and I would like to ask Board Member Bellamy if she would please do that for us tonight. Thank you. The board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Denina people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our hybrid meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District in this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students to support success in life. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. If we can get a motion to approve.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I wanted to request a couple of modifications and amend it just slightly before we do the final approval. We currently have 25 people on our public testimony. Normally, that allows for about 20 people as part of that public testimony in that first hour. I was wondering if the board would be willing to support getting all 25 in that one hour or the, just right up front, so that we are not unnecessarily keeping folks past that time. That was the first request, was just to do all of our public comment at that one time. And then I wanted to add, after public testimony, the second one, which will go away, maybe, and right before school board administration comments, a section for maybe new business, where we just needed to have a chance to talk as a board about the upcoming replacement process for a board member, and there's a conversation on our joint meetings with the assembly. So I just wanted to just cash that under a new business header, just to create that time on the agenda for us. Those are the two things I wanted to add that would make it an amended agenda. Was there anybody else that had anything that they wanted to add, or subtract, or move, or comment on? Is there any opposition at this time to approving the agenda as amended? All right, here we go. Next up on our agenda is the military report, and I believe that we have, I saw his name, is it Colonel Delamater?
Close, Colonel Delamater.
Delamater. Oh, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Yes.
Okay, I know the board has a lot to cover tonight, so I'm going to be quick and brief. I've got four items to brief, and then I'll obviously take any questions from the group if there are any. So number one, just want to make sure the board is aware that right now, Joint Base Elmandorf Richardson is currently in the throes of one of our major military exercises called Polar Force. And what this typically does is it tests our ability to generate military forces to send out the door to go do bad things to bad people. And sometimes it also involves us receiving forces here for onward movement either to other places or for folks that are coming back to the United States. So that's going on this week and next week. The only thing that should be, it should be transparent to everyone in the community, but we may see some traffic building up at the gates as we exercise some of our force protection elements at our base access points. But other than that, it should be pretty transparent to you and to the children that are attending our schools. The second thing is, is that we're getting ready to launch the Red Ribbon Campaign, which is an annual event focused on drug prevention with our schools and our youth. The 2020 theme is be happy, be brave, and be drug-free, and that's going to run from the 23rd to the 31st of October. Now, normally, we would have a march and some other activities and events that the kids would participate in their particular schools, but because of the current environment and the virtual learning environment, we're going to work on some art activities and some other things on the installation to allow them to kind of maximize and advertise the importance of that program. The third item is, just want to give a quick plug for our youth sponsorship program. So we have youth centers on the installation that really focus on mentoring and developing our military dependents. We work youth ages nine to 18, and we work with the school liaisons to partner with all the schools throughout ASD to make sure that all those military-connected children are aware of the program. There are applications available if you have any wanting for both youth and parents, and you can see that at the website, JBERlife, jberlife.com, and we encourage folks to check that out. The last thing I want to do is I want to say a big, big thank you to the school district. I had a discussion with Dr. Bishop a few weeks ago, and she let me know about a beta test of the volunteer tutoring reading program at some of the schools, and she was kind enough to have Aurora Elementary on base be one of the schools that participates. We currently have 28 students enrolled in that program. It's a big win for military families, because two things that they were mostly focused on was how to take care of our younger school-aged children, our kindergartners, and our first graders, and also our children with special needs and IEPs. So we're really, really grateful for that program, and we're so glad that we can be a part of that. Those are the only four items I had for the board. At this point, I would take any questions if there are any.
Do any board members have any questions for the Colonel?
I have a question.
Is that member Mitchell?
Thank you, Colonel, for that update. I'm just curious, have there been many cases of COVID on the base or in the military world? And how are things going? Are your folks staying healthy?
Yeah, for the most part, we're pretty fortunate, and we're trying to balance, obviously, the public health aspects of it, and also the, you know, the mission requirements that we have on the installation. Certainly, I think we've all noticed that there's been a rise in the incidence across the Anchorage municipality. We're a part of that demographic, so we're seeing our fair share of that on the installation, but we're taking a lot of steps to make sure we're doing the contact tracing, and we're making sure we're reinforcing those mitigation measures. So hopefully, we're not the cause of any of the, you know, the issues that may be happening in the area. But we're certainly, we live in this, we live in this environment, we live in this community, and we want to make sure that we're being a good partners with our, for the folks on the installation, as well as the folks downtown, and especially mindful of what that drives with some of the decisions recently with the return to in-school instruction. And I know that Dr. Bishop has kind of outlined how we're going to take a very deliberate approach. I actually exchanged some notes recently with Mr. Tom Roth, because we wanted to make sure we understood what the decision matrix was. We knew that before it was the, you know, the rolling 14-day case count, but now we understand it's a much more robust, there's eight criteria that we're examining now to make sure that any decisions related to the return to school factors those in, and the military members and their families on the base are willing to, and are very willing to follow those guidelines for safety.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands up in the queue. Again, thank you very much for your service and for coming and sharing part of your evening with us, and have a good night. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have board conference and committee reports. I don't believe we've had any recent conferences, but committees. Start with finance, and member Marsette.
Well, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be on the 20th, I believe, and we will be entertaining conversations about budget, and of course, we'll get our update from Andy and Jim on our update with student count and those type of things. So they'll give us our continued update on where we are and what we're doing, and how much money we have and how much money we don't have, and it's always interesting. So we will see.
Thank you. Member Hildy with governance.
Thank you. We haven't met since our last meeting, but we meet on the 13th of October. We'll be a little earlier at 3:00, having a little longer meeting.
Thank you. Next up, communications, member Bellamy.
Yes, likewise, we have not met since our last meeting, but our next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 13th, at 4:30, and that will be an online meeting. And if I might add, I did attend the CUBE Conference, the Council of Urban, I think it's Boards of Education, which was my first, and it was amazing. Lots of focus on, excuse me, what different, how boards were working together with their superintendents, how boards were working toward more equity for all kids. It was very enlightening, and I will be sharing some information with the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
And it was Zoom. I did not go anywhere. It was a Zoom conference.
Yes, thank you. Next up, we have community outreach. Is there anybody that would like to share any of their experiences, conversations, or comments from the community since our last meeting? All right. We will continue to work on that one. Next up, goal monitoring.
Thank you, Madam President. As the goal monitoring is focusing on the board's goals and our look towards achieving those, and the strategic plan is coming, and the data that we would utilize to track our progress is not a complete set, as shared last time, due to just simply not having a testing last spring, not having in the fall. We've been meeting the outcome monitoring aspect with requests from board in regard to different programs. And at this time, I would invite Sonia Hunt, Kirsten Johnson, Dr. Johnson, and Senior Director Hunt. They will each take a separate place and two mics. They're both present, along with Dr. Knutson, who's with us online. This is a joint effort in one of our initiatives called Equal Opportunity Schools. We've been working on this for about 18 months, but we can, do we have another microphone, Mr. Brown? Okay. They're going to simultaneously present, Mr. Brown thinks. Synchronously, like our online learning. All right. So with that, I'll turn it over to these three leaders. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bishop. To the President, to members of the board, we present Equal Opportunity Schools Partnership. So the Equal Opportunities Schools Partnership is a part of our Equity Plan under Academic Achievement. It's the second goal, and it's to partner with equal opportunity schools to create sustainable options for academic equity in all subject areas, including honor and advanced placement courses. In terms of post-secondary success, research shows that academic intensity in high school drives college completion more than any other factor. 85% first-time students of color and low-income students who take an AP or IB course pass the class across the Equal Opportunity Schools' portfolio. 77% of first-time takers report a successful experience, and again, that's across the Equal Opportunity Schools' portfolio. Our theory of action is clear in that if we provide targeted and intensive supports for schools in advanced placement course offerings and engage underrepresented students, then the number of underrepresented students in AP courses will increase and experience success. So I want to pause right here to define what underrepresented students. And Dr. Johnson will get more into that, and so will Dr. Knutson. What we mean here is underrepresented students, particularly in AP courses, the students that are missing. This project seeks to provide equity in advanced placement, hereby referred to AP, course offerings in race and ethnic composition. The goals are, there are three goals: to increase the enrollment of Alaska Native, American, Pacific Islander, Black, African American, Latinx, and multiracial students in AP courses, thus reducing the participation gap between their white and Asian peers; to provide similar AP course offerings at each of the major eight high schools; and to increase the passing rates for students of color.
Okay, good evening. On this next slide, we are going to give an example of some of the data that we looked at for the Equal Opportunity Schools. So for the AP data, we looked at data from the eight comprehensive high schools to really identify trends in enrollment and passing rates. And this is part of a needs assessment that was done that's required for our Title IV grant, which is the funding source for our work with the Equal Opportunity Schools program. And just as a little bit of an aside, Title IV is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, that focuses on student support and academic enrichment. And so Title IV specifically is intended to improve equitable access to holistic education. So that's how that fits into this grant. And so we did the needs assessment, and we looked at the data across these eight high schools, and this is an example of the data from East High School, just as to provide you a mind's eye of what this looks like. And as Ms. Hunt explained earlier, it's looking at the comparison of underrepresented students compared to white and Asian participation in AP courses, which represents the majority of kids that typically take AP courses. So as you can see here with East High School, the white and Asian participation rate has remained stable across the two years. And when we look at specifically the number of underrepresented students to enroll, so I want to just take a moment to explain what this is. These are the number of students that are ready to be enrolled in AP courses but have not had equitable access. So they represent our missing students in our AP courses. So with this statistic, you want to see this number actually go down, not go up. So you'll see here on this slide that between, in 2018-19, we had 245 students at East High School that we categorize as missing from our AP courses. And to last year, in 2019-20, that went down by 57. That is the direction we wanted to go. So they're getting more underrepresented students taking AP courses at East High School. The other statistic that we look at is AP exams receiving passing scores. Unlike the previous one, we want to see this one go up. So you'll see here, for the AP exam from 2018-19, we had 51%, and then that went down to 42% last year. There could be lots of variables. It was a tricky year to take an AP test last May. I can attest for that, because I had a child that took one, and it was, it was a little bit challenging. But that is a statistic we want to watch, because we want to see that going up in our schools. So next slide, from these data, what we did was identified how we were going to roll out the schools for participation in EOS. And for this current year, there are four schools that are going to participate, and Bartlett and East are two of our Title Schools, and for part of the Title IV grant, we need to identify our most needy schools and our Title Schools as part of that funding. So we started with Bartlett and East, since they qualify as our Title I schools, and we also added on Service and South. And the reason why Service and South were added is because they have a well-established AP program at schools. However, one of the things that they need to work on is how they get more of those missing, underrepresented students accessing AP courses at the schools. So those four schools are starting this year, and then as we go into the following year, the remaining high schools will participate in Equal Opportunity Schools. And to talk a little bit about more what that's going to look like in that technical solution, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson Strumpler right now.
Thank you, Dr. Knutson. Through the President to the board, I'm excited about this project. It's something that, at the high school level and secondary, we've been working towards for a few years now, and it really does tie together some of the previous initiatives that we've been kind of working on to lead up to this, and many of those are board-supported initiatives as well. And so I just wanted to just touch really quick that this builds on the NIMZI grant work that was established at Bartlett and E. Bloriver, about five to eight years ago or so. And we've done a lot of training with our high school leadership around AP and advanced coursework and increasing rigor, and how we really look at that at a school level for our high schools. And then, in addition, it's really going to tie into our springboard adoption at the sixth through eighth level. Those basic skills that kids are going to get through the middle school years are really going to prep them for this next phase of coursework. So getting back to the topic more specifically of Equal Opportunity Schools, I just, one of the things that I really like about this project with our high schools is that it provides a roadmap for our high schools to have these tough conversations about barriers for kids getting into advanced coursework, policies and procedures that may be in the way, and then provide the platform for that conversation as a staff. And so the process right now is, starting this fall, we will survey staff and students at those schools. That survey really will lead to a conversation examining policies and procedures at the school level. And that survey also provides what you see here, a report that's called Barriers for Students, and it looks at both students in medium and high income and also in a lower socioeconomic status. And that's important to not only look at student demographics, but also their socioeconomics, because there could be various different reasons why kids have a barrier into that advanced placement coursework. So it identifies where the school is doing very well, but it also identifies where the school could really do some work. So you'll see the different categories here. There's an adult encouragement barrier, so are the adults holding kids back? Is there a benefits barrier? And that sounds kind of, you know, contradictory, but the benefits barrier essentially will describe that maybe students or parents don't identify why advanced placement coursework would be important for a student, and just their general trajectory thereafter. General knowledge barrier kind of falls in that category, too. Do we even know really what advanced placement is all about and why it's important? School access, this is something that we have complete control over, right? Is the school providing the opportunity and the access for kids to be able to take those courses? And then welcome, this is really about the classroom environment. Do kids feel comfortable in that space? And so you'll see, this is just an example. This isn't from the Anchorage School District. This is just an example from Equal Opportunity Schools, but it provides you kind of a window into what schools will receive at the school level. So from here, they get their, the Barrier for Students report over the winter, and then schools have a conversation about what their outreach plan is based on that information. The other thing that they also get is what is called a student insight card. And you'll see the beginnings of one up here on your screen. And so, in addition to the holistic school report, they also get a report on each individual student that we need to provide outreach to. And so it provides a lot of information, and we can just kind of scroll through this really quickly, but it's, not only do you get, obviously, the student name and all of their basic information, but it talks about subjects they're interested in, teacher recommendations. It talks about what skills and mindsets are strong, maybe potential barriers for them as an individual student, if you scroll to the next part, this insight card. So, and then it asks very specifically, why hasn't the student enrolled in AP coursework? And I think that's really important when we're working with our teachers and our counselors at the school level, so that they can have those individual mentoring conversations with students and invite them in. So it also gives test scores, so that you can see where that student is, and then just the student's own comment section, so they can add their own comments. So this is really a tool for counselors in particular to really advise a student well. So that's the tool that they use for individual outreach, and then there's a plan for a school-wide outreach as well. And then in the spring, as students start to interact with the staff around this outreach plan, you do another assessment in the spring of how is it working? Do you need to make changes? And then we go from there. So that's what it looks like through the spring. And just to kind of sum up where we're at, we just wanted to talk a little bit about our commitment around this project. One is that equitable access and opportunities are keys to building a successful learning for each student. That's something we really believe in.
And we use theoretical, we looked for a theoretical framework to use as markers to make sure that we were on the right track, and we use Gloria Latson-Billings' Critical Race Theory for Education, and some of the components include curriculum. Is this equitable curriculum? Is this equitable instruction? Is this desegregation and gifted education? Is this school funding that we can direct towards this to ensure equity for all children?
Yep. And really, one of the hard things about providing access and equity is a good tool for educators to really dig into that topic and break down barriers. We really believe that this is in the right direction. So that's why we're really excited about this project, and I'm actually really excited to get all eight of our big high schools on board. And just one side note, when we bring West on board next fall, not only will we focus on AP, but we'll also focus on IB coursework as well. So, thank you very much.
Madam President, that concludes the goal monitoring. And again, it was not on model as we have it, but this was of interest to the board, and just happy that this project is, had an opportunity to be highlighted. It's excellent, and it was almost probably 18 months worth of work to turn this around and grant it, fund it, and plan for it, and get the buy-in needed. So thank you. And thank you. I appreciate working on your A-team, ladies.
Thank you very much. I do have some hands up in the queue. The first one up is going to be Board Member Hildy.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on that. I'm wondering what the projected outcomes are for this grant work. What should we expect to see? How big of changes? And then I was also wondering about a goal monitoring calendar for this year. Are we going to be seeing one of those, so that we know what, I know it's a weird year, and our goals are kind of crazy, but is that something in the works?
Through the President to member Hildy, certainly, the outcome was, the outcome monitor calendar was really in reference to the final push of the strategic plan initiatives that we're going to draft where we're one step closer. So we will have that done. If that is where the board takes their action, then we will bring back a monitoring calendar for the board to take a look at utilizing the data that we know we can find and have for this process. And for the first question, I'll turn it over to Dr. John.
So, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the President to member Hildy, our outcome is that we would hopefully have equal representation across the board in our district and our advanced coursework, where there's really no difference between what your demographics are and what you're enrolled in. Obviously, we want to see more and more kids enrolled in AP. There's a lot of benefits beyond just college opportunities for kids to be enrolled in AP, and I could get into those if you're interested in a conversation sometime, but the benefits are huge for kids, even if they don't go to college. And so our goal would be as many kids in advanced placement and increasing that rigor as possible, and no difference in the demographics within the classroom.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is member Mitchell.
Thank you so much. This is a very exciting program, and my question was just very simple. The insight card on the students, do the students complete that themselves, or does the counselor or their mentor or their teacher kind of probe them on it and then fill it out?
Great question. Through the President to Member Mitchell, there is, it's kind of a combination, essentially. There's some student input to that insight card, and then there's other pieces that are input by teachers or counselors. And then there's also just testing, you know, basic data.
Thank you.
Next up in the queue, I have Member Bellamy.
Thank you, guys. This is great. I'm really happy to see the barrier piece, identifying the barriers. And so each school will have a plan to identify or to address each barrier? Or are we doing that as a district?
So to the President, to the Board, to Member Bellamy, each school will have their own plan, and because it's equitable work. So making sure that every school has what they need in order to move towards equitable access. So some east, the needs for east will be different than Bartlett, and some needs will overlap. So they're individual, it's their individual plans.
Okay, that's great. And so the outreach piece for, so each school then will look at their, look at their student data and find those kids who are capable, but not in those classes, that have demonstrated success.
Right. To the President, to the Board, to Member Bellamy. I have to remember that for a second. Yes, so what every school will be charged to do, so every school has to build basically an AP equity team.
Okay.
And they will look at the data. And what the research already shows is that there are students that are eligible to take AP. They're just not taking it. One of the things that the data also showed for Anchorage School District is that the family engagement piece is important in ensuring that it's, what the data showed or the surveys have shown is that parents and students know about AP courses. They just don't know about, understand the weight of what it means towards post-secondary success, whether you go to college or whether you're more prepared for the workforce. And so every school will have its own plan, has its own team to be able to delve deeper into the qualitative and quantitative data.
Okay. Thank you, guys. It's great.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. You mentioned you're using critical race theory to develop this program. Could you define that? And could you explain how exactly, how it's impacting, how you're designing the program?
Sure, thank you. To the President, to the Board, to Member Donnelly. So what critical race theory or any theoretical framework does? It creates markers for which you can measure your work by, right? It gives you kind of like a standard or components or context for what you should be looking for. So critical race theory was originally developed by an attorney, Derek Bell is his name. And it's been adapted to multiple settings to really identify equitable progress. And in education, Gloria Latson-Billings talks about, and these aren't the only components. These are ones that apply to the work that we're doing to be able to develop those markers or the context for which we should be looking for.
Thank you. Let me go back to my other screen. Member Marsette.
I just don't think that was a definition. I was asking for their impression of what a definition of critical race theory is.
Sure, to the President, to the Board, to Member Donnelly. So critical race theory is defined by those components, right? And those components point to, again, the context for which equity should occur or which equity would thrive in various settings. And this one is adopted to public education, where we would look at, is there equitable funding to ensure equity amongst, for example, in this context, kids that are approaching gifted education? Whether it's culturally responsive or a thought of curriculum instruction? And those are the components within the definition of critical race theory. I hope I answered your question.
Next up in the queue is Member Marsette.
So I can just say, wow. This is really, really a great initiative that you guys have pushed forward, all three of you. Great job, great job explaining that, creating that equity among our students when so much else is going on. Something we've been looking for, I think, for a long time, and it doesn't happen overnight. So I just want to give you kudos and thank you so much for working on this.
All right. I don't see any other board members' hands raised in the queue. And so I want to thank Dr. Bishop and all of the presenters for that. And I'm just tickled and excited to see those results a year from now and how it goes. So thank you very, very much. Next up in the agenda is public testimony. I'm going to read a brief statement. "The Board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The School Board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for telephonic testimony or in-person testimony or to email written comments by 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. These comments will become part of the meeting record. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting, and testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. Tonight, we are going to try and get everybody into the first one as possible. You will have three minutes to testify. With 30 seconds remaining, a bell will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." I have a list of 25 people. Some are in person, some are telephonic. And so we will just start working our way down the list. I believe our first person is there in the boardroom, Dane Sutterfield, if he is present. Perfect. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, School Board and Dr. Bishop. I'm Dane Sutterfield. I'm the President of Anchorage Council of Education and for Board Policy. I'm here to announce the intent of the Anchorage Council of Education, American Federation of Teachers, to enter into negotiations with ASD for a contract that's upcoming from July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2024. I am humbled and honored to stand here. You know, it just moves me to know that I stand for about 455 people that don't ask a lot, but they do amazing things for the school district. About 225 positions make up those 455 people. There are specialists, there are experts, there are managers, there are supervisors. There's, there are people that are in the trenches every day, making the school district work and making it possible for us to learn. Teachers and principals can't do what they do without the support of my members. I also want to say that this administration, the current administration, has been wonderful to work with. You probably don't hear that very often. There are a great bunch of leaders led from very top. Dr. Bishop and her executives are amazing people. They're great leaders. They work well with many of my members in many different challenges that we face in addition to the pandemic. To work through different work site issues, problematic issues, you know, where sometimes things quickly go right into labor and go into grievances and complaints and those sorts. And I have to say that this administration is one that is willing to listen and to roll up their sleeves and get down to the bare bones of what makes a workplace safer and better for their employees. And I want to say that out loud, so everybody hears that. The members that I represent, I mean, the titles are just endless. But I wanted to mention just a few of them because I can't call them all out. But I want to say that, you know, they're made up of nurses and interpreters and interventionalists and claims technicians and transportation staff and safety and security and payroll and accounting and facility project management, and the list goes on and on and on. And I just want to say that they want to defend the benefits that they have. They want, they haven't asked, because we kicked the can down the road a few times, and it's time to come to the table and negotiate some better benefits for these individuals. And we want to continue to work with the district to improve their working conditions. And, you know, they want their COLA back. They want, they want, you know, a cost of living adjustment coming their way, something they haven't asked for. And now it's time for that ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on the phone is Speaker number two, Rihanna Gay. Rihanna, are you with us tonight?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Greetings, School Board. This is Rihanna, again coming to you for the third time. I want to thank all board members for their efforts of what you do for myself as an educator, our students, and community. I am sharing my support and efforts to rename or modify any Eastside School after the late Senator Betty Davis, a former school board member and champion for all students and educators and education. She helped our whole community with law and educational policies for all, whether it is a high school, middle, or elementary. Find out where her residence was and name her neighborhood at school after her. It requires uncomfortable change, and that is what America was built on, uncomfortable change. With renaming a school after Betty Davis, it is not, and I repeat, not taking away anything from past alumni nor current students, nor the traditions of our community. If anything, I see it as striving forward and adding to the rich cultural awareness that we possess. Renaming is a notion that is asking alumni to build a bridge and not build a fence. Bridge building allows both parties to succeed. I did some research and found out that about 101 schools within ASD, 30 of them are named after men, while only four are named after women. Those four include Gladys Woods, Wayley, Clark, and Mears Middle. If you have updated information, please reach out. This gesture is looking towards the future. A new day is upon us where we have the power to make change. Let's be strategic. We can make SMART goals to start. I leave you with a song. With our own two hands, we can change the world. With our own two hands, we can make it a better place. With our own, with our own, with our own. But it starts with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Speaker number three. I don't see her in the phone list, but I'll check to see if she may have shown up in person. Sarah Reynolds Weston. All right, we may circle back around to this caller. Speaker number four has canceled for tonight. Speaker number five is Rebecca Hayden. Rebecca, are you with us this evening?
I'm here. Can you hear me? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Rainier Harris, a senior in high school, recently wrote an article for the New York Times about his experiences with systematic racism within his school. He explained that racial slurs were common but dealt with swiftly and harshly if discovered. He wondered what good it really did to expel students who engaged in racist behaviors. Forced to report an incident that had happened to him, Rainier worried about what punishments would be applied. He was surprised when staff switched tactics and used restorative practice instead of expulsion. The result was school-wide dialogues about racism and carefully mediated discussions. Regarding the outcome, he wrote, "Restorative justice doesn't allow an institution to simply remove the bad apple. It inspires solutions that achieve value and respect for everyone. It forces an institution to look at community-oriented solutions that make everybody uncomfortable, not just those who are involved, but it is the only way change can be made." This, esteemed board members and Dr. Bishop, is at the very heart of what discipline in schools should look like. When discussing solutions, it is important to realize that instructing teachers and administrators about restorative practices is not enough. Punitive ideologies are deeply ingrained and manifested in automatic punitive responses to conflict. Therefore, an important step in implementing any new disciplinary system is to address adult SEL. Restorative practices are counterintuitive. They are practiced deliberate responses to conflict that intentionally build community. That is not natural, nor is it easy. We take a great deal of care to teach our students about values like respect, honesty, integrity, and so on. Through programs like Capturing Kids' Hearts, we learn to discuss and practice these words. However, when conflict arises or authority is challenged or students behave egregiously, we often resort back to a punitive mindset that seeks to remove the bad apple. In doing this, we fail to model the values we teach in the moment they are most important. Adult SEL addresses the work of intentionality and respect to conflict. It addresses the end goal of community building rather than punishment and student removal, and it addresses the hard work of integrity when faced with students that create automatic reactions of anger and posturing. Why is that so important? Because restorative practice is meant to be a pervasive practice. Because if we teach respect and values in the classroom, we'll model it when it drives negative behavior patterns to work as meaningless. Because if the values we teach only extend to the point of cooperation, then reset rooms and offices become places where coaches and administrators feel pressure to reinforce authority structures rather than build community. And finally, because when students need the most intervention, care, and community support, the adults are divided, the message is mixed, and the students are treated inequitably. As we move forward as a district to implement restorative practices in our schools, we must be mindful of the work and of the vision, and we must begin with the adults in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Speaker number six is Sydney Olson. I don't see her online. Is there a chance she is there in person? All right, we will circle back around. Speaker number seven is Reagan Brooks. Reagan, are you with us this evening? Reagan, can you hear us?
Hello, I'm, hi, I'm here, but I'm actually driving, so I need to pull over. May I go, may I go after the next speaker?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, all right, the next speaker, so we'll need you to mute, thank you. And then our next speaker is Speaker number eight, Emily Baker. Emily, are you with us this evening?
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you. You have three minutes. It was yours.
That's tough. That's a tough process. I'm glad I'm here. I am Emily Becker, and I'm a retired ASD teacher. I have lived in Airport Heights for 13 years, and I've taught at Airport Heights Elementary for eight years. And I'm calling in, I would love to see East High School renamed after Betty Davis. I know a lot of Thunderbird graduates, and I really encourage you to reach out to more recent graduates and kids and talk to them about this possible change. And I recently read a long article about many of our police names in Anchorage. And I really think that it's past time for better representation for our Black community. So, and that's my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to check in with Reagan one more time. Reagan, are you ready for testimony?
Hello. Hello, yes, I am. I am here. I am safely pulled over.
Thank you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rean Brooks, and I'm a parent of children in the Anchorage School District. And Superintendent Bishop and members of the School Board, thank you for listening to my testimony. I'm speaking to you today. I'm speaking to you today to ask you to support the renaming of East High School to Betty Davis East High School. This is a wonderful opportunity for our community as a whole and I believe for the current and future children who will be able to learn about and be inspired by the late Senator Betty Davis. Also, inconveniently, I want to point out that this name, the name Betty Davis East High School includes the name East High, so there are no worries or about concerns that some alumni have raised about changes to uniforms or confusion for college athletic recruiters or losing a sense of Eastside pride. And I also want to say that this is about more than changing uniforms, which really wouldn't need to happen anyway. And it's about embracing an opportunity to add significant educational value. It will involve some paperwork, yes, but a pile of paperwork is so worth it in an instance like this. So please listen to many community members who genuinely support this renaming, including alumni and athletes and more. I also want to point out that during your earlier discussions this evening about equal opportunity schools, one of the speakers spoke about barriers that might prevent some students from participating in AP courses. And in particular, that speaker spoke about welcome, the degree to which a student feels welcome in a space. The name of a school is not disconnected from this conversation. The name of a school and who it celebrates can advance welcome or undermine it. It's not hard to see how alumni, if you can still hear me, it's not hard to see how alumni negativity about renaming East High School could be undermining the welcome factor for students of color at East High. I urge you to consider the renaming as an opportunity to advance welcome and as a result in that, advance equality of opportunity in our schools. Thank you again for all you do to support students despite all the high pressure, immediate needs you are currently addressing. Please don't hurry through this decision and miss a long-term opportunity to support learning and advance welcome in our most diverse high school. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And for pulling over safely to do it. Our next speaker, number nine, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you with us tonight? Danielle, are you with us?
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought I was speaker number 14, but I guess I'm moving up in the world, huh?
You are number nine, you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, I only have one subject I'm going to speak on and it's going to be brief, but I hope you're listening. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer. I am a teacher here in the Anchorage School District. And I want to say emphatically, and without any equivocation, without any doubt as to what I'm saying, that I support the renaming of East High School for the late Senator Betty Jean Davis. Like Reagan said, you don't have to necessarily take out the east, all right, in the name and for sporting scouts who still are looking for the name east, that direction can still be in there. It can be Betty Davis East High School. I'm, I'm just fine with that. I'm sure the majority of our community is just fine with that. Just to give a little background here, Betty Jean Davis was born May 17, 1938. Let's put that in context, okay? Senator Davis was only one generation removed from slavery. I just want that, let that sink in for a second, okay? Yet she rose to become Alaska's first Black Senator in a long time, Anchorage School Board Member. There was no stronger or hard-working advocate for our children, women and for racial equity than Senator Davis. I read that ADN article a few days ago that disparaged the renaming of East High School after Senator Davis. One part really took me back. It was, I think it was Principal Spanner, I believe, said, and I quote, "The renaming of the high school is a lot more than just changing its name. There's a lot of reputation that goes along with that throughout the state, through, throughout the state and also in the lower 48." Now, what kind of message are we sending to our community? To our children with saying something like that? Especially our children of color. What, that some, some folks in power don't want to quote-unquote "selling" the name of East High School with that of the late Senator Betty Davis? That's a slap in the face to not only the Davis family, but to all Black children who would, that to achieve as much as she did. All right, so, you know, I think that if the school board wants to put their money where their mouth is and that they actually believe that Black lives matter and that Black education matters, then they should be fully behind the renaming of East High School after the late Senator, the great Senator Betty Jean Davis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 10, Elizabeth Colavicio, which I believe is in person, if she is there.
My name is Elizabeth Colavecchio and I am a senior at Bartlett High School. Tonight, I would like to speak to you about the effects your decisions have had on the mental health of high school students. While I am aware that nothing is likely to be changed, I would feel like I had let myself down if I chose to stay silent. High school students have been expected to pick up the slack where others won't or can't. We've been asked to learn many new apps to tolerate non-functional virtual programs, to adapt to the isolation of seeing our peers only through screens, and to being told we will have three classes, only to find out that the weight of these three classes feels like an impossible task since they have been crammed into an unreasonably short period of time. As a student who usually excels, I have found myself feeling as if I am drowning. My therapist has told me her waiting list has become miles long, filled with teenagers who are cracking under the pressure of this school year. We are being asked to do something no ASD students have ever been asked to do and with seemingly little consideration for our mental health and the process of choices being made. I understand that every choice made right now is difficult. However, I feel as if high school students are an afterthought in the eyes of the school board, that because younger students need more support, it has been decided that we need none at all. But just because seniors graduate this year does not mean we are not valuable students worthy of resources and more than the bare minimum of consideration and communication from the people in charge. I have been dissuaded from pursuing certain courses because the ASD virtual program is an abysmal failure, told there is simply no answers to my questions about academic extracurricular activities, and gotten the sense that I am being punished for wanting more out of my education than a certificate that says I did the bare minimum to graduate. While I would, while I admit I don't have every solution, a minimum of acknowledgement that this is an issue, more mental health resources, or at the very least suggestions of healthy activities to participate in would likely benefit the masses of us who feel so isolated under the current circumstances. I do not want my peers, my friends or myself to end up a set of statistics that you analyze to see where you went wrong, only to repeat the same mistake.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 11, Alex Blum. Alex, are you with us tonight?
Can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Alex Blum. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak because I support the renaming of East High School to Betty Davis East High School. As you no doubt know, Betty Davis was Alaska's first Black Senator, a long-serving Anchorage School Board Member and a lifelong champion of children, women and racial equity in Alaska. It makes perfect sense to honor her legacy in a meaningful way. And because of the remarkable diversity of East High's student body, Betty's residency near the school and representation of the area in the Alaska House of Representatives and the Alaska Senate, renaming East High to Betty Davis East High School would be an especially impactful way of honoring her legacy. I hope you'll take this step to honor Betty Davis and thank you, School Board, School Board members and Superintendent Bishop for this opportunity to testify and for your time.
Thank you. Next up, in person, speaker number 12, Sarah Price.
Can you guys hear me? Thank you, School Board, for once again having me. My name is Sarah Price and I'm a junior enrolled at Yggdrasil High School. In my last testimony, I spoke of many relevant issues and the conflict of school closure, but there is still much to be addressed in this complex issue. I understand your concern for the health of your students, and in a similar way, teachers are worried for the health of themselves and their loved ones. However, COVID should not be one of those worries. In Alaska, COVID has unfortunately taken 58 lives, but it should be noted that in 2018, the common cold killed 68. In Alaska, there have been zero pediatric COVID deaths, but across the nation last year, there were 189 due to the flu. Was there school closure? No, because our education was not sized in the face of such a proportionately small threat. I understand the fears of teachers who themselves or a loved one is at an extreme risk, but I do, and I do not believe they should be put in jeopardy, but there are plenty of teachers who are able to do the essential job of educating our youth in the classroom, and the district needs to start prioritizing this. Living in this world is risky, there's no doubt about it. When everyone present got in your car to drive here, you risked joining the 3 million injured in car crashes a year, but did that stop you from coming here? Evidently, no. Life is filled with risk management, and all the students who signed up for the option of in-person school accepted this risk and are pursuing their education in spite of it. However, not only were we fooled to think that we would actually be in school, but the education we were offered, as I previously stated, is a glorified version of homework. Online school is not adequate and hardly the bare minimum of an education. Yet as myself and a diverse student body are drowned in homework, stress and depression, the Director of Learning for Innovation for the district alluded our pains to quote-unquote "bumps in the road." Our neglect of education is not a bump in the road. Our failing grades in poorly executed online classes are not bumps in the road. Not obtaining scholarships are not bumps in the road, and our struggles are not bumps in the road. 12 weeks of our education has been cut off and the rest set at a flying pace that students cannot keep up with, resulting in double the homework and an unprecedented amount of stress. While everyone focused on returning elementary school students who have six to 12 years to make up for anything lost, high school students have a ticking time bomb counting down to adulthood and our futures, and ASD is putting us last in line. To teachers and parents, you see what is happening to us. You watch us suffer and stay up all night the entire school week, so please, find the empathy to assist us in getting back to school. Nonetheless, we will advocate for ourselves. As School Board President has stated, there is a silent majority, and we will not stand to have our education taken away because of our circumstances. Myself and fellow students are developing a resolution to organize the voices of the large majority and work with the board to give high schoolers a true in-person option. I implore high school students from around the district to join us in speaking out until we are back in school where we are truly safe and working to contribute to a brighter future for this nation. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all at as many board meetings as necessary to achieve this goal.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number 13 on the telephone, Erica Salazar. Erica, are you with us this evening? Hi there, thank you. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Erica Kelsey. I mentor three refugee kids through Catholic Social Services. All of them attend ASD schools. In September, at your last meeting, I sent a written testimony about classifying ELL students as high needs for early return to in-person classrooms. Obviously, that's not happening for anyone right now. I have very little hope left that they can catch up to their peers and graduate high school, no matter how hard they try or how hard I push them. I originally wrote my letter regarding the ineffectiveness of online school for this population, but the fear is true either way. My time is limited, so today, you'll only meet Deani. Deani is 11. Two years ago, she began fourth grade at Wonder Park, a shy, polite kid who loved her school and her teacher. Academically, she tested below kindergarten and also qualified for special education, but then she won the year-end award for the most improved student. Her motivation and willingness to work hard are intrinsic. Her pride in her accomplishments is electric. Working with this kid is an absolute joy. Last year, she changed schools. Her classroom teacher was unresponsive and ineffective. He did not respond to a single one of my eight emails over several months, but he did reference one in conversation once, so I know he got them. In a parent-teacher conference, her sped teacher was unable to discuss her progress in math, which should be 300 minutes of her week. No one could tell me about her grades, which either weren't posted or appeared as zeros. The same is true today. Deani told me on one occasion that her work was too easy and frequently expressed frustration at other kids' bad behaviors. I requested enrichment work to do at home twice. It was not provided twice. Once, she was absent due to illness for three days and I asked to pick up any missed assignments. Again, nothing. And she was marked as present for those days. I wondered if anyone was really paying attention at all. The kids were sent home in March. The message to families was that there would be no new education for elementary students because somehow that was the only way to be equitable. Three people at her school told me she would not receive an ASD Chromebook, so I bought her one. Weeks later, school called to schedule a pickup time for her Chromebook. Assignments posted to her Canvas account right now do not reflect her IEP, nor did the packets sent home. Deani has had a private tutor in reading this summer, three times per week for 45 minutes. Her IEP team set her goal for this fall at eight correct words per minute. In the meantime, she has progressed more than a year and a half. I speak for her because her parents can't. They don't understand your language. They are so blindly grateful that their children have a safe public education. They truly believe that showing up and doing the work will turn their kids into productive and successful adults. As a citizen of this country, a local taxpayer and a successful public school graduate myself, I so wish that were true. Please help me make it true. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, speaker number 14, Tanya Iden. Tanya, are you with us this evening? Tanya, can you hear us? Yes, perfect, thank you. You have, thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you so much for the opportunity to address this body. I really appreciate the opportunity. I didn't really prepare my statements, but it was very interesting listening in tonight about the conversation about equity, and I'm really excited to hear that the school district is pursuing, you know, looking at and exploring how AP classes can be more equitable. I'm actually here to talk about East Anchorage High School and how I really would encourage you to rename it Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. I am a former alumni or current alumni, former East High School student. I graduated in 1991, and I felt it was really important to speak up as an alumni about how wonderful it would be to have this school named after Betty Davis. I think it would really reflect a student body, a very diverse student body, but was there when I was a student and continues to be attending East High School. And I think it also would foreground for our community all the different stories and narratives that are present here that don't really get told. Many people have referenced that we have all these different school boards named primarily after men. Many of them are, you know, named, very few of them are named after people of color. Maybe only one is named after indigenous persons. So I just see naming East High after Betty Davis as a win-win. It's additive, it just adds more nuance and story to our community, which is exciting and something that students can learn from and all of us can learn from as well. So, thank you very much, and I hope you'll consider my testimony.
Thank you very much. Next up, speaker number 15 in person, Anne Thompson. And when you're ready, you will have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Hello, School Board. Thank you for being here today and taking the time to listen. I'm here today to talk about Aquarian Charter School's special dispensation making the reopening a quarterly decision. There's an understanding that charter schools are regulated by their individual parent-teacher run boards, but this is an issue that is greater than the Aquarian Board, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. Basically, Aquarian Charter has asked to shutter its doors for the whole of second quarter and possibly the third quarter. At this point, ASD is performing an evaluation on opening every two weeks, or Aquarian evaluates every two and a half months. every two and a half months. If Aquarian is allowed to continue to evaluate quarterly, it could mean, once ASD deems it safe to open schools, that Aquarian could stay closed to in-person learning. Aquarian should follow ASD's plan on when to open its doors. Last night, while sitting at the table, dinner table, preparing this speech, my fourth-grade son asked, "What was I up to?" It was then that I told him about his school's recent decision to shutter its doors till January, and then I explained to him that friends in the neighborhood may have the chance to return to school before him. My son replied that he wanted that exact same chance to go back to school at that same time. This was an emotional moment because my son felt as though his school was letting him down. There are many benefits for children to return to in-person learning. When ASD deems it safe, Aquarian should return with all the other neighborhood kids. I advocate for the School Board to step in and decline the second and third quarter special dispensation. I'm Anne Thompson, I have two kids at Aquarian Charter School, so please keep this in consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Speaker number sixteen on the telephone, Susan Ritter. Susan, are you with us this evening? All right, we'll come back to Susan. Next up in the queue is Speaker number seventeen, Marie Asima. Marie, are you with us this evening?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you so much for welcoming me this evening. I just wanted to call in regarding the name change, and I'm calling in support of the change from East High School to Betty Davis East High School. And just to give you a background, I do a lot of after-school programs at East, so I know some of the students there, and I love the school with a passion, and I grew up on the East side. I also have a son in the ASD, and we talk a lot in Anchorage about how we're such a diverse community, and we actually brag about it, but it's not really something that we embrace in a more authentic way. And I think renaming East High School to Betty Davis East High School is truly putting our money where our mouths are and saying we authentically value diversity. And I also think of my students of color and my white students, all of my students, and how they need role models of color. We all need that, and we have them, and why not celebrate them with the names that we give our schools and, you know, I think it goes on and on from there. So, I really am passionate about this change. I do think it's one of many things we can do, and I thank you for considering it, because change, like someone said earlier, is hard, but it's worth it. So, thank you so much, that's it.
Thank you. I would like to circle back around, Susan Ritter. You are next on our list. There you are, thank you. You've got three minutes, and the floor is yours. No, no problem, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you so much. Members of the School Board, Dr. Bishop, ASD leadership, members of Anchorage Education Association, and our Anchorage community, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Susan Ritter. I am in my fourteenth year as a life skills teacher, and I have been teaching at Service High School for the past four years. Go Cougars! Prior to that, I was an elementary school, life school teacher. I would first like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Starr Marsette for her service on the School Board. She is a strong advocate for all students and in particular, students within the special education community. Thank you, Ms. Marsette, for your advocacy. I would next like to thank Dr. Bishop for making the hard but necessary decision to postpone opening of our schools to face-to-face teaching. Why did Dr. Bishop have to make this decision? Because numbers of coronavirus continue to climb upward. I would like to share the following information from the Alaska Department of Health and Social Services. According to the case count summary, on Monday, October fifth, 2020, COVID-19 cases are continuing to rise all across Alaska. And on Monday marked the daily high of one hundred and ninety-four new cases. I won't go into the details, we see them all the time. As a matter of fact, I got a nixle today stating that our COVID numbers are increasing. The Department of Health urges Alaskans to take and exercise caution and take the following So, wear your mask, watch your distance, wash your hands, avoid the three Cs, crowded places, close contact settings in confined enclosed spaces, keep contacts limited and social circles small, avoid indoor gatherings, don't ride in cars with people who are not in your household bubble, limit your errands outings, watch out for COVID-19 symptoms, get tested if you just have one symptom or mild symptoms. Of course, there are more of these guidelines, but I won't continue on because this message has been repeated over and over and over and over, from the spring to the summer to the fall. So, this is why I am not able to return face-to-face instruction, because the Anchorage community is not adhering to the recommendations, suggestions, requests, the near begging of the health professionals to follow these simple guidelines. I know my students would be better off in my classroom with my team, but until the numbers go down, it is not safe to return to the classroom. The citizens of Anchorage need to do a better job at caring for one another. Dr. Bishop and the School Board stay strong and continue to follow the signs. Thank you so very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, I have Speaker number eighteen, Denise Bomeraj. Denise, are you with us tonight?
Denise, can you hear us? Oh, hello, can you hear me?
I sure can, thank you so much. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Denise Bomeraj, and I am supporting the changing of, the changing of name from East High School to Betty Davis East High School. And I have a lot of memories from that, from the school, because I used to, when I first got here to America, because I'm from Africa, I used to go there for my ESL studies and I'd take breakfast there. There was a lot of diversity, I had some friends who were from my countries there, it was fun, and I think it's a very good and honored and giving, you know, the people of color, not the privilege to feel like they're, you know, they're in the community, they feel like they're all like together, so, because most of the schools in here, in the US, are named after, probably like most of the people are white people, so it's also giving the privilege, the people of color. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Speaker number nineteen, Ally Phillips-Mo. Ally, are you with us this evening?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can, thank you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Ally Phillips-Mo, and I'm a family nurse practitioner and parent of an ASD kindergartner, and I'm speaking regarding the closure of in-person schools. Last Friday, Dr. Chandler of the Anchorage Health Department stated that there had been seventy-six children in Anchorage who had tested positive for SARS-CoV-2 over the previous one week. In contrast, DHSS stated that just one child in the entire state had contracted the novel coronavirus in a school setting after over a month of many statewide schools being open. Again, that is seventy-six children in one week out of school compared to one student in over a month statewide in school. By this metric, it seems that we are looking at things completely backward, and having kids in schools is actually the most safe place that they can be right now. What I've experienced as a parent and seen in my practice in outpatient pediatrics is that keeping schools closed does not mean that all children are staying at their houses. No, many parents, including myself, are shuttling their kids between nannies, family members, friends, and day camps. Some of the more organized families have formed pods of kids going from household to household with much less stringent mitigation measures in place than real school. It is essentially like the Wild West out there right now in Anchorage for a lot of kids. Meanwhile, in Matu Borough, where schools have been open with consistency and strict mitigation measures, there was no rise in cases in the weeks following school start on August twentieth. As cases around the rest of the state are rallying, the Matu Valley has seen just a modest increase. Maybe coincidence, but it certainly doesn't appear that schools there are contributing to increases and even prompts the question, as nearby Anchorage surges, could schools there actually be a protective factor in limiting spread? We talk about people in the community needing to wear masks, limiting mixing between groups, and keeping track of their movement to aid contact tracers if they test positive. Are we ignoring the biggest tool our community already has to help accomplish these things for children? Yes, this is personal to me as the working parent of a kindergartner, but I also am a healthcare provider who cares about the well-being of the community and cares deeply about the long-term health of children in this community. Please, ASD School Boards, remember that the monumental decisions that you are making are resulting in known harms to children without much solid evidence of benefit. School openings have been correctly called an experiment, but let's not forget that continuing to let families and students fend for themselves in the chaos of a closed school system is just as much of an experiment. How long are you willing to continue this school closure experiment if community cases continue to rise throughout fall and winter, as many health experts expect them to, and if there still isn't any evidence of benefit? To close, I urge you all to keep an open mind, not base decisions on conventional wisdom, consider all the evidence, and work towards the goal of returning to in-person school to limit the known catastrophic lifelong health effects that I'm sure you're all familiar with that will certainly occur the longer we wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Speaker number twenty is Celeste Hodge-Groudon. Celeste, are you with us this evening? Celeste, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, thank you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Anchorage School Board members and Superintendent Bishop. I'm Celeste Hodge-Groudon, President and CEO of the Alaska Black Hawkets. I know this is a particularly challenging time for you as you work to do what is best for the children in our district, and I appreciate all your hard work on their behalf. These times have us all very focused on the presence. That is both understandable and important, but I ask that we also remember steps we take now can have long-term impact. Investing in the renaming of East High School to Betty Davis East High is one such step, a step that will bring many positive long-term impacts. I appreciate the ASD naming committee's report and the superintendent's recommendations to name the East High Auditorium and Fairview Elementary School after Senator Davis. According to the superintendent, the naming committee followed ASD policy seventy-five-eleven. However, after review of this policy, it's apparent ASD didn't follow their own policy in this renaming process. I also want to share the Fairview Community Council has had, as yet, internal discussions about renaming Fairview Elementary School after former Fairview teacher and principal Dr. Elfeldra Davis. Dr. Davis, no relation to Betty Davis, was Alaska's first black teacher and principal of that school and first black principal of Alaska. I highly recommend you not name, rename Fairview Elementary at this time, instead leaving open the possibility of a future renaming of Fairview in a process that is gaining grassroots support in the Fairview community. Unfortunately, many states or local efforts because they didn't receive the survey, or what I call the straw poll, and don't typically visit the East High website or Facebook page where the survey was located. Now, the awareness of the campaign to rename East High School to Betty Davis East High is growing and becoming mainstream news. Stakeholders like my daughters, Felisa and Selena, Senator Davis's granddaughter, Felicia, Gladys Langdon, Gladys Langdon, mother of Traden Langdon, who played with East Anchorage High School, and many, many others who never received the survey or knew of the survey are weighing in, supporting the renaming. Many community members have pointed out that Betty Davis deserves the honor of having East High bear her name, and it is time that our local major high schools begin to bear names that reflect the wonderful diversity of our community. Therefore, I ask you to either create a policy regarding school renaming or apply the existing new school policy to the renaming of the school. As we all know, rules and institutions are important, and to proceed without them is unacceptable, non-transparent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Speaker number twenty-one, Annie Massey. Annie, are you with us this evening? Annie, can you hear, there, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We sure can, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Oh, I'll do my best with three minutes. Thank you, Madam President and Board. I'm here to report that as a parent of three children enrolled in the Anchorage School District, my children desperately need to return to school in person. I recognize our students have work to do, and that what this district is providing in a virtual platform is a poor substitution for an education. I support opening schools and request the Board votes on this decision today. A majority of children learn best in person, and if you do not understand that, then you have been out of education for far too long, or you do not have children. The dramatic shift in daily life due to pressured shutdowns is threatening our children's well-being, of which as a member should be your first commitment. School closures are radically altering stability for kids of all ages, of all backgrounds and abilities throughout ASD. Anxiety, depression, anger, weight gain or loss, suicidal ideation, increased abuse, neglect, self-harm, and hunger are a few consequences associated with school closures. What's more, the solution for education to simply become virtual is also problematic for many. Sleep problems, eye strain, headaches, apathy, intense stress and overwhelm have become the new normal for children. Since when was it ever okay for our children to spend more than one to two hours in front of any screen? Now it's completely acceptable? Since when do teachers expect children, little children, to accomplish what amounts to inappropriate expectations to perform technical multi-step processes and tasks in abstract learning environments that are completely foreign to them? Since when has this Board not reflected on our neighboring district practices for a lead? Matu Borough and the Kenai Peninsula are operating with proper safety protocols. Why isn't Anchorage? Here's the way I see this. I estimate somewhere around eighty thousand have voiced their desire for students to be in schools, and I say that because I look at that as evidence by their enrolling their children in your at-school model and not the virtual model. To me, that's evidence that parents want their kids in schools. Enrollment may be down, but when forty thousand students have opted for and enrolled in the at-school model, it sends a clear message that parents want their kids to be in school. In closing, I want to make a point of awareness that in Dr. Bishop's report to the Board, she notes that thousands of Chromebooks were distributed and reveal, have revealed to them that students accessing YouTube on these devices report suicide as a top search result. We adults need to decode that message now and not later. When children do this, they're sending a message that they need help. I, for one, decode that as a message to pay attention, listen, support, and lead, and I hope you do. This decision is ultimately up to this Board. Yes, ma'am, am I done? Bless you. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Next up, Speaker number- Next up, speaker number 22, Pamela Gilden. Pamela, are you with us this evening? Pamela, can you hear us?
Hi, can I hear you? Can you hear me? It's been a long day.
You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Dear School Board members and Anchorage School District, my name is Pamela Gilden. I probably sound familiar because I have testified on this issue before. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Fairview Elementary. I'm calling in today because I am disappointed in the solution presented to my school to help lower our numbers in our classrooms. Before I presented information on our class sizes, we have roughly 31 students in a sixth grade class, 31 in a fifth-six combo, 31 in fifth, 28 in fourth, 28 in another fourth, 32 in a third-grade classroom, 26 in second, 25 in second, 25 in first, 31 in a K-first combo, and 28 in a kindergarten class. And those numbers are probably higher now. That's old data. Our school has begged for additional teachers to help with the student-teacher ratio in our classrooms. Our principal and assistant principal have spoken up. Our teachers have testified. As a school community, the staff does all it can to support our students and show them the love they deserve. We understand that there are many moving pieces within the district right now. However, we are not happy with the solution presented to us in regards to our student-to-teacher ratio. We were told that we would only be getting one teacher transfer and told that our PE and art teacher will now become classroom teachers. This is great news in one way because our class sizes will now be lower. However, now we are losing two of our generalists for interventions. Now, those two generalists will not be able to do small group interventions with our students, which they desperately need. Turning our generalist into classroom teacher sounds great, but in the long run, it will hurt our school. This solution is just like putting a Band-Aid on the problem. It is not fixing it. In fact, it's disconcerting. We need teachers to be hired into our school to take those classroom roles, not our generalists. Taking our generalists away from important interventions is not the answer. When we come back to face-to-face, we will also no longer have those generalists for support. Again, we're failing our students. Our district needs to focus resources on keeping classes at reasonable sizes and provide the resources necessary to educate all students. Instead of hiring more positions for the district office, which do not directly impact our students, overcrowded classes, even with extra paraeducators to provide extra help in the class, is not what's best for our kids. Having large class sizes is unacceptable for our students. Taking our generalists used for important one-on-one and small group interventions is wrong. ASD needs to know that we care about class sizes in our schools. We care about small group interventions. We need to make sure the district knows we expect them to spend funds on classroom teachers so that our kids get the education and support they deserve. These students need extra support from us. The solution to this problem is unacceptable. Putting a Band-Aid on the problem will not help us in the long term. We need teachers. I love Fairview Elementary. I love my students, and I love working in Title I. Please do what's right for these children. The education that they are still receiving is not equitable, and it won't be until something is done about this. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 23 has canceled, so we're on to speaker number 24, Megan McBride. I saw her on the list, but now I don't. So, maybe circle back around. Speaker number 25, Kier Moore. Kier, are you with us tonight? Kier, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you so much. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Kier Moore. I'm a parent of a student who will go to East High next year, and I just want to say thanks to all of you for the hard work that you're doing in these really trying times. I'm here to speak in support of renaming East High to Betty Davis East High School. ASD committed in 2019 to renaming a school after Senator Betty Davis. Rather than rushing through this decision hastily, I'd like to ask you to deeply consider what this could mean for the Black community in Anchorage by creating an inclusive and fair process for assessing support for this. If we want racial equity in our schools, we have to be bold. It isn't easy, and we shouldn't be looking for easy solutions like naming a smaller school after Senator Davis or making micro gestures of inclusivity to stay away from anything that draws attention from those who are unwilling to contemplate and consider the importance, the weight, and the fair share of pride for Black students and Black people in Anchorage. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm gonna go a little off script here. I have one phone number that is called in ending in 057. If that happens to be one of the three speakers that I missed, Sarah Weston, Sydney Olson, or Megan McBride, this would be a great time to unmute and join the conversation if you are one of my three. Okay, well, I wanted to give an opportunity to that phone number. We'll go ahead and check back in with these three folks if they call in for possibly the second public testimony after that list is done. Would encourage all board members to make sure you've had the opportunity if you haven't, and the public can go out and see all of the written public testimony that is attached to our agenda that has been submitted up until 2:00 PM today. Next up in our agenda is the superintendent's update, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. There's three items that we will be covering today for the report, and I will have some assistance with that. One is an update on, the first one is an update on our stance with school opening. The second one is really, Dr. Stock is going to talk to engagement, and then finally, the superintendent's report on the Betty Davis Naming Committee update. I'd like to start with school start and the decision guidance, and our director of nursing will jump in in a minute, but I just wanted to start with what we've heard this evening from students as well as parents is absolutely, what I would say would be my assessment, we are not doing a good job of educating our young people with distance delivery. The decision that was made last Monday was based off of being in the highest-risk category, but there is no surprise that this summer, when we were in the medium risk, as well as when we utilized the new CDC guidelines, there was immense pushback internally to this decision. The mission of our school district is to prepare all students for success. We are not meeting that mission. I saw the AEA survey as an honest assessment of where our staff was. About a quarter of them, for personal reasons, do not want to begin. The 76% or so that either had some trepidation or none at all, I see that as favorable. I enter the community, organizations that I partake in, whether it's the store, a gas station, a doctor's appointment, this office, with my own trepidation every day, which ensures my safety. I remember to wear my mask. I practice the social distancing. I wash my hands, use sanitizer. When I'm with someone whose mask slips, I kind of gesture to be sure to get that up. Being laissez-faire is not what we're asking for. What we're asking for is to meet our mission for children. And prior to last Monday, I did have support of the state officials, and it was caution given with the rapid increase. Hence, the postponement was made. But ASD will never, because of our location in the largest city, in close proximity, will not find ourselves in a medium risk, at least for a year, I would suspect. We cannot wait a year to educate our children in buildings. This is passion in my voice. It is not a sign of weakness in making a decision. I'm letting you know COVID is killing our children in more ways than one, and we need to stand for children today. Jennifer Petronas, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I'm just gonna share my screen. All right, there's the board president to members of the board. As you all know, on the 15th of September, ASD adopted the new CDC indicators and thresholds for the risk of transmission in schools, and I'm just gonna go over what today's numbers are looking like for Anchorage. As you can see, our case rate today is 340, which puts us in the highest risk, which also indicates that we're in an upward trend in our community. The percentage of positive cases is holding steady between a 3% to 5% range at 4.3. We've also increased testing capabilities, and we, in the last 14 days, have tested about 23,000 people in Anchorage, which is really good, and we're actually number one in the United States in our testing capabilities, which is actually a good thing. The other indicator that we're in the red for is the percentage of changes in the last seven days compared to the previous seven days, and we're in the red at 13.2%, which indicates that we're in an acceleration phase for COVID in our community. And then, looking at the bed numbers for both inpatient and ICU beds, we've remained pretty much the same, and also with our percentage of individuals that are COVID-positive in our hospitals. I think it's really important that all community members take action to not only protect themselves but also protect others so that we can decrease the spread of COVID in our community. As this meeting was going earlier, I got an email from the state that indicated that our production number in Alaska, or our R0, is 1.03, and anything over the number one indicates that we have a high epidemic spread in our community. So, our goal is always to be under one for that R0 or that reproduction number. Right now, we have 4,000 active cases in all of Alaska, and we're just working hard to get all those people back healthy and just attempt to mitigate the risk in our And that concludes my update.
Thank you, Jennifer Petronas, and I want to apologize for my passion. I appreciate that update. And now for the second part of our report. We have some information from Dr. Stock in regard to engagement data. This was a request from the board, and we hope to continue monitoring this, but Dr. Stock is gonna share some of our struggles presently with this, but how we look to report to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, what I'd like to do tonight is just share with the board what the data collection pieces are that are currently underway, and we don't have the data to share with you tonight because it has to get vetted and looked at by our leadership teams, and we have to sort through a number of issues with regards to how we collect it, make sure that we've got exactly what we want. But here are the collections that are currently underway. Last year, you remember, we did a lot with engagement, and we did things like measure the amount of students in terms of logins. We have significant numbers now that everything's in remote and are using different platforms. We have to go through the K-6, which is the Calvert program, and sort through all the login pieces for Calvert. We've got Apex running in grade six through 12, so we have to look through that. And then, of course, our face-to-face, when we're in face-to-face or currently remote, those teachers are all using the Canvas platforms. So, we have to sort through all that. In addition, we're finding out that the login datas, there's a lot of families that go in, like, say, in the elementary, and they'll go in through another program called Clever, and they can bypass the Canvas, and therefore, we have to track a lot of different pieces to give you what we're hoping is accurate information with regards to logins. But I can say, without giving numbers, is that I'm pretty confident that our overall login rates are higher than they were in the spring and that we're getting closer and closer to getting all those pieces taken care of. There's still families with connectivity issues that are still struggling to get those internet connectivity pieces resolved. But what we're looking in, we're looking into attendance and engagement, and I want to point out that attendance is a little different, so comparing apples to apples is a challenge because in a current remote environment, attendance is a bit broadly constituted in terms of students who may miss the morning Zoom meeting, but then they watch the video, and then they turn in all their assignments, and they get everything done, and then get coded as present. And so, but we will share with you the overall attendance rate, all of the student subgroups, student groups that we track, and then, of course, all the grade levels. We're also looking at all the grades and student marks, both with student groups, and of course, then doing some comparison with the marks for ASD virtual, and that would be both the K-6 and the 6-12, and also share with you the marks as far as the students in ASD at school or the remote instruction. So, that's all underway as soon as I'm able to get that vetted and share it with Cabinet on Monday, and our next board meeting, we'll do a full report, and that's all I had.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. Things can never just be easy, can they? Darn it. All right, the last report is the Betty Davis Naming Project update, and I wanted to provide an opportunity for the board to really ask additional questions in addition to the written report presented, and I would like our senior director, Sonia Hunt, to come forward, as well as, I believe, elementary senior director, Dan Barker, was involved in this initially to share the report and really to be present to answer questions. We do have a principal here, Principal Spinella, for his part in providing feedback and support to the team. Well, I believe that's it. Oh, and Diane Teakle, there you are. I see you. Hello, you can wait. Hi, Diane Teakle Opitz, thank you for being present as well, the principal of Fairview. At this time, I'll turn it over to the committee because I'm not sure who's going to present first. So, as a backdrop to everyone, I wanted to share that this request came to us after the passing of Senator Davis. It is noted that she provided a great service to public education and to our state all around, and we are delighted and believe that she should be memorialized in a school name. We absolutely support that. And the three names that were considered actually were recommendation from the city at the time. At the time that the board received the request, the request was for this building to be renamed. And due to not owning the building, the board president at the time just said, hey, I think we should think about a school that actually will stay there for longevity. I had requested to be part of the naming committee when I heard that the city and the muni decided to do that. That wasn't granted, however, at the last meeting, thank you, Member Bellamy was part of that naming committee, and she requested that the district be able to listen in to find the final stages of that. So, Dan Barker, I think, was the person who was able to do that, and from there, we hit a pandemic and are catching up on processes. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dan Barker. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I there? Okay, thank you. As Dr. Bishop said, I'm Dan Barker, senior director of elementary, and I had the privilege of starting this process for the district, and at that point where we began dealing with some of the pieces in the epidemic, it was necessary for me to switch that work over to senior director Hunt, who's gonna pick up after me. So, I know we have some slides. If we can move to the second one, I'll give a little bit of the background stuff, sorry, while I turn so I can read it here. Dr. Bishop spoke through the background here of where we started, which was my involvement, right? So we had the initial request for that process where we would come up with that naming piece that went through the municipal group. Member Bellamy was a part of that meeting. I was able to attend as the school district representative for the final meeting of that group, where we reviewed options for areas that Senator Davis had worked with in our community. That group generated three names at the time. One was the Airport Heights Elementary name because that was, again, a portion of that East Anchorage area where she had worked historically. Another was Fairview Elementary. I have the privilege of being a former principal of Fairview, so I had a little more experience with that community and its connection to the late Senator. And then the third, of course, was the recommendation for East High School as one of those options. The committee group from the municipality discussed those options. They made a recommendation that was to come back to this group and sent that letter forward, I believe, in December. And at that point, we had begun by working with those three schools in our process, which involves connecting with the principal, having the principal then reach out to both their staff and their community constituent stakeholders, excuse me. In the case of both the elementary schools, that involved their PTA/PTO organizations. In the case of East High with Mr. Spinella, I believe that was through several of his booster groups that they were going to get that information out. So that was, at that point, I had directed the principals to reach out to those communities, to start talking with their parent organizations, make them aware of the request and the effort and what our process would be, which was to form the groups and take their feedback from local communities about their experience and where they wanted to go with that naming effort. At that point, we get up to late February, when it was time for us to submit the recommendation back for the superintendent, which would then move to the next phase of working with those groups. And COVID hit. At that point, of course, I had some other duties with regard to the elementary division. And so senior director Hunt was willing and able to step in and take over for me.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members, to the president, to members of the board, Dr. Bishop. My name is Sonya Hunt. I'm the senior director of the Office of Equity and Compliance. And thank you, Dr. Bishop, and thank you, senior director Barker, for outlining the beginnings of the process. So COVID hit in March, and we had to just look at how we can engage communities differently. Same fervor, but just differently. And so the committee convened again. That included the three, a member of the director of secondary education, Martin Lang, Michael Webb, the Airport Heights Elementary School principal, Diane Teakle Opitz, the principal of Fairview Elementary School, and Sam Spinella, the principal of East Anchorage High School. And we convened, and here was our thought process. How do we create questions that are simple, a short survey to increase the likelihood of completion, that we would provide options to the community in terms of what this could look like, based on even the feedback that the principals had received when they were gathering qualitative data before COVID, pre-COVID? And how can we get the community as a whole to weigh in in terms of varied stakeholders? So we identified five key stakeholders: parents, community members, students, alum, and faculty or staff. And the survey was circulated starting August 28th and commencing or completed by September 12. So more than two weeks, about two weeks of circulation within the communities. So pretty much, it was data collection, data review, and a recommendation made. There were four questions given to the communities of Airport Heights and Fairview Elementary School, five to East High School, as they had an additional option. So the options were to rename the school, to co-brand the school. And in the question to co-brand the school, it was defined, are you in favor of co-branding a school? And I'm going to use East Anchorage High School as an example, to East Anchorage, a Betty Davis Center. The third option for East High School, because they had an additional option, was the auditorium. And so the question read, as another option, are you in favor of naming the auditorium after the late Alaska State Senator Betty Davis? And so we received responses from all three surveys, East High School being the largest group of participants, which numbered at 1,645 participants. And I will let the principal of Fairview share more about the Fairview circulation, and then Sam Spinella.
Hello, thank you very much. I'm Diane Teakle Opitz. I'm the principal at Fairview. We reached out to the community. The survey was sent out to our school body, as well as a couple of the local church groups, Facebook. And we had also the staff responding. As a rule of thumb, the response for renaming Fairview was really positive. Of the total renaming, only 22% or so were not in favor. And over 77% responded that they were in favor of that. And in addition to the respondents to our survey, we received a letter from the senior center, which is in our community. And that represents all 1,700 members of the senior center. And they were thumbs up, very much in favor of renaming. And also, the co-branding was, they were very positive about that. So as a whole, I think that for Fairview, it's an honor, and we're thrilled to be considered for renaming after the late Senator.
Thank you. I'm Sam Spinella, the principal of East Anchorage High School. The way we distributed the survey was through our East Anchorage website. We did a survey that was sent out through our Blackboard to our parents and to our students. We also use book. We have a Facebook page that's sent out to the community. We have a large following in Facebook. And we had connections with different alumni groups that we sent the survey out to. And then, those are the groups that we sent and we used to reference to. The, do you want me to give the results? Do we get the results? Okay, the role of the responses that we had were over 1,600 responses. And that, I believe, there were 84% of the students or 84% renaming said no, and 15% said yes. The co-branding of the school, 78% said no, and 22% said yes. Naming of the auditorium or the theater was 29% no and 70% yes.
Thank you. And a part of the survey I failed to mention is that it was open-ended for people to give their reasons for not wanting to rename the school. And for Fairview, for Airport Heights, some of the themes were it being centered on an option being East High School or the neighborhood history, not being in alignment with the renaming. Fairview, the themes were centered on political leanings, though they were greatly in favor of renaming or neighborhood history. And for East Anchorage High School, the themes were centered on legacy family tradition or recommendation of the name being used for an elementary school. And so the recommendation was?
Yeah. Thank you. Continue, yeah.
Okay. So the recommendation of the committee was that it is the recommendation of the Betty Davis Facility Naming Committee to rename Fairview Elementary School and the auditorium at East Anchorage High School into the Betty Davis Elementary School and Betty Davis Auditorium of East Anchorage High School, respectively. Thank you.
And thank you. I would like to add in regard to, you know, the naming of the schools and facilities in regard to community input, the intent of the policy is to ensure that community is involved. And whether the struggle was a member. And so, due to COVID and having to adjust and do things differently, we used electronics, similar to how we're doing lots of things now, in order to get the feedback. And certainly, we did receive the feedback in regard to, folks were thinking about it. So I support the recommendation and leave that to the board for its discussion and determination. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's no questions, then we're complete. Not sure about that.
All right. I've got one hand raised in the queue so far, Member Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you for the work on this. A couple of questions. I'm curious, I know that the policy, you may have just addressed this, but I know that the policy discusses having five citizens from the community to be on the committee. And I'm wondering who they were, if we had five citizens on the committee, or if not, why we didn't do that. And I'm also wondering, I know that the Fairview community is interested in naming, potentially renaming Fairview Elementary after another, you know, as we heard earlier, the first African-American teacher. And I'm wondering, from the principal of Fairview, if that's something that hadn't reached her attention or she thinks that's not as appropriate? Because it seems like that was kind of the will of that community, the direction they were going there. And in terms of the poll that you guys sent out, I'm curious, I know you allowed an opportunity for people who are opposed to the name change at their particular school to put why they were opposed. I'm wondering why we didn't allow people who are in favor to, you know, why we didn't allow them to say why they were in favor of it. So, yeah, those are just some questions I have about the process.
To the president, to members of the board, to Member Mitchell. So the format of the committee decided on a broader outreach strategy to engage various citizens of the community. Before the survey was decided as the outlet or the means to which to collect the insight or the opinions of the respective residents of each community, principals had been talking to their PTA presidents. They had been talking to members of the community. They were, the principals were the outreach persons in order to be able to engage the community. So that's the process in which we did things. I want to make sure that I'm answering your second question. Your second question, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
I think it was in regard to Principal Diane Teakle Opitz in regard to the other naming, which came up as a result of this.
Okay. So I will, I can let Principal Teakle Opitz answer. I will start by saying that we were unaware until basically late last week that that was even a consideration by the Fairview community. The three options came from the municipalities committee. And so at that time, they were Airport Heights, Fairview Elementary, Airport Heights and Fairview Elementary Schools, and East Anchorage High School.
And Member Bellamy, I'm not sure who was on, the citizens who were on that original committee.
Okay. It was Celeste Hodge-Groden, Diane Kaplan from Rasmussen, Bill Pop, and Felix Rivera, although he, yeah, Felix Rivera from the Assembly. And I'm missing somebody. But that's, and myself.
And then the recommendations came to us from that.
And that is correct. Although the recommendations were in priority order, and that order was East, Fairview, Airport Heights. And I can't find the memo because they sent it back. But it was in priority order. There was a priority in terms of the naming.
Member Bellamy, through the president, it is in the December memo, which I know we, as administration, have. So I'm sure we can get it for you.
Okay. So we'll turn it over to, did you want to speak anymore, Diane, to that? Or?
Yes, I just mirror what Ms. Hunt said, that we just weren't aware of anyone else or any other considerations for renaming Fairview. It just only came to light last week. It's not that we're opposed or anything like that. We just didn't have that information.
Thank you. And then the last question was, oh, when you receive a no, and they had to explain it.
Sure. So at the time of creating the survey, we wanted to make sure that the survey was short. And we wanted, just for reference, to be able to cite the trend of why people would say no to the renaming of either three of the schools. I will say that the participants shared positives, and they answered the question directly, and some shared positive sentiments in remembering the late Senator Betty Davis. Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have board member Bellamy.
So I did want to mention a couple of things. Thank you. One was that there was a priority in the recommendations that came from the muni. When we, when the superintendent spoke to each of us last week, there were a couple of, and there's a historical piece that was, that gave me a bit of thought relative to East having a name already attached to it. Like, you know, just like we have Service Handschu, Bartlett Baggage. You know, back in the day, we were building huge monster facilities, and eventually we broke them apart. So, you know, so I'm not, so that historical piece did have a, gave me pause because I mentioned to the superintendent that I had forgotten about that in terms of history. But Benny Benson has now since moved to its own location as a facility. So how much of that, if anything, did it play into the process of the historical significance of Benny Benson being already attached to East High School? Or was it?
Thank you. To the president, to the members, to Member Bellamy. So Principal Sam Spinella did bring that up, that there were found, he found old maps of the school that called it East Benson High School. We did some further research, and what we found was that there were two of the, with the original intention to blend the high school and the middle school, the portion that would have been the middle school was named Benson, right? That portion of the school. The other portion was named East Anchorage High School.
Okay. So are we currently using anything relative to Benson at East High School?
Then I can answer that because we looked in CPNC as well. There are hallways. It's the Benson Wing where that is. So they internally call that, students know that that's the Benson Wing. But there isn't presently an official name of East Benson High School. It's the Benson Wing. And it was, of course, the Benson Middle School, as you suggested.
So I guess my wonder, I guess, is, I understood that there were three recommendations from the city. And I guess I just don't quite get why we did not do, I know why we didn't because it's only, I see Betty's work as impactful for the city of Anchorage, not just three schools. But since those three schools were recommended, it just seems to me like we should have somehow done a broader survey because it is apparent through the testimony that members in our community, and they are not all black people, they are members in the community who are concerned and who have not been given a voice, other than through testimony. So, I mean, I live between East and Airport Heights. My son is an alumni. I don't, I know he didn't get a survey. He didn't see the survey, but he doesn't visit the East High School website. But he doesn't visit the East High School website. So how would, how would, how would people get the survey? If, if, I'm just trying to figure out how broad, how broad was the survey? And my other question is, before we got the information, almost before, at the same time we, as a board, received the information from Dr. Bishop, there was a newspaper article that, in that newspaper article, which I don't know how it happened, but it gave, it gave a whole different view than what the superintendent presented. Because to be quite frank, when I talked to the superintendent, we talked about the historical significance. I was, I said to her, seems like a reasonable compromise. Now, in looking at the entire process, I'm just not sure. I don't know how, I don't know that we did our due diligence in terms of hearing from people. And I know it's COVID. I know it's difficult. And our priority has to be to get kids back in school. This is, this is not the thing that I want it to be tripped upon. But at the same time, I just think that, I, there's no, I mean, I'm sure Fairview would want Betty. I'm sure. I mean, that's not a doubt. But that doesn't reflect, I don't think that reflects what the community is wanting. And when we look at, however we look at this, however we get through it, it's going to be very impactful. Not to deny Fairview, okay? But to hear the voices of this community. And so, yes, there is a recommendation. I feel different about the recommendation today only because there are so many, I mean, if you look, there's 95 emails in the box right now, in our email box right now. Half of those are on naming. So, anyway, I don't, I don't have the answer. But I would have wished that we had have done a more comprehensive, citywide kind of thing. I found out about the survey on September 10th, I think it was. So anyway.
To the President, to the board, to Member Bellamy, thank you so much for your reflections on this. I will say that the survey, for example, I'll use this as an example, East High School has over 2,300 likes on their Facebook page. When the survey was posted, I mean, literally, the response rate was actually better than district-wide surveys that we typically get, and having almost 2,000 responses. I do think that as any process, there are always reflections of things that can be, could have been done differently. I will say that during COVID times, this was a way to provide community input or to give access to the community to a survey in the safety of people's homes, right? Where they can complete it and they can share it. I do know that, I mean, 1,645 is a lot. It's substantial. Now, well, that's almost the population of the high school itself, if not greater. And so what we found from East High School, the persons that responded, again, we gave three options, to rename, to co-brand. And we even gave an example of what that co-branding could look like. East Anchorage High School, a Betty Davis Center, in the question itself. And the third option of naming the auditorium. And so, of that survey, what we found was, of the 1,645 responses, 7.2% were parents, 8% were community members, 18.8% were students, 49.7% were alum, and 6.3% were faculty or staff. Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Mitchell.
Thank you. I, you know, again, I'm just a little puzzled. Let me go back to the policy. I just had it up. Bear with me for a second. Too many screens, hang on. The po, um, so.
Do you want me to read it? You want me to read it?
Sure, yeah, that would be great, Alyssa, if you have it up.
BP 7911, the superintendent or Dugismi will be responsible to appoint a committee for the naming of schools, facilities, fields, and other areas. And then there's a corresponding AR for administrative regulations that mentions some of the committee stuff that people have talked about.
So the part that I wanted to just reread was the part that said that it would consist of at least five community members and then also the outreach that they recommended. I guess, I'm just concerned, do we know? I talked, I have heard through phone calls, through text messages, through personal emails, through school board emails, I have heard from so many East alumni who said they did not know, they didn't get the survey, they didn't know about this, they completely support naming East High School after Betty. In my mind, it's, it's the thing that makes the most sense. I guess I'm just, I'm wondering, the policy is so clear that it should be at least five community members. And having three principals is not the same as having five community members. And then I'm wondering, you know, did we go to community councils? I know that mentioned going to a church. What other community outreach? Alyssa, if you have that in front of you, can you read again to me? Or to everybody?
Sure. So you're talking about AR. So the committee, so this is the administrative regulation, which is not board policy. It's how board policy is actuated.
Yeah, I do have the board policy.
I have the board policy. But the AR is what you're, so the AR says the committee will include a central office administrator as chairperson and a principal and at least three, at least five other citizens in the community. And then it says, citizen, board member, students, PTAs, or other parent groups, school personnel, community councils, and community members at large may submit names or consideration by this committee. And then the superintendent will make the final recommendation to the board.
And thank you. You're absolutely right. I was getting confused between the policy and the AR.
Correct. And I will take responsibility for the AR. In the COVID times, in regard to a, and especially since it wasn't one school in one place, it was three schools that were recommended to us. To be fair, we wanted each of those schools to be represented by the community group. And that's how we started it. They were getting names at the time COVID hit. COVID hit, how do we engage our community? The intent of that is to ensure that community engagement happens. I support how we enabled community engagement to happen. And there is a lot of emotion. Senator Davis deserves recognition, absolutely for her service. I would say and share, after the same article, Ms. Bellamy, that you saw, my name was in there. So hundreds of emails came directly to me and not to the board. And they were, I would say, the opposite of the ones that are coming now. They were not in favor. And I've asked to have those for the board to see. This is emotional because of the time. But it is, again, the process was built around responding to a timeline for which, I think, three times in public, myself, as well as this board, were addressed by the Black Caucus for not going fast enough in selecting it, that, remember, Senator Davis deserved to have this. And so we kept that in mind about their request to be able to do this. And at no time did I expect that the community involvement at a larger sense, trying to engage people electronically, would be determined as kind of a negative thing. It was honestly, in hindsight, I see, you know, if that's what would have made people more comfortable is having individual, just three people decide, I missed that one. I really thought that it would be more engaging to hear from the greater community. And as far as, you had a good question about what are those things and Facebook and listed alumni remind? I don't, can you speak to those? I think that was also a good question that was asked. I don't really know some of those.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The engagement, that's the question about, it's the flaws, really, are people feeling, well, I didn't have a say, even though the response rate was pretty high considering surveys that our district gives.
But I guess the thing is, when you, publicly, we put it on East Anchorage, or East Anchorage High School Facebook page, which has a big following. And then we had some contacts with some alumni groups that were also sending that out. So I'm sure there would be some people that would not be connected in some way or another or hear about that. We had several people that were hearing about it and following it and also getting the survey by different ways. I had several people contact me to get the survey and we were able to get it out that way as well.
Can I just ask, Dr. Bishop? When you say you got people, a lot of emails and half of them were against, they were against the recommendation of Fairview? They were against East? What were they against after reading that article?
They, actually, it was more than half. The majority that I received were requesting similar to the, how the board has in your inbox to not name East High School.
So basically, they were responding to the article and saying they supported the Fairview recommendation that the committee had come up with?
Well, no, no, they didn't necessarily say they supported Fairview. They just supported, they just, that's correct. They did not say, I support Fairview. The specific ones, and I can get them, but the majority were, they were not in support of renaming their high school. And the majority were alumni. But I could go back. I just asked Janet to assist me, my assistant, to assist me in getting that to the board for your review. But then they started coming into the board as well. All board members, not just me. So then I was, I didn't. But it, it's a shame what's happening because I know that Member Davis wouldn't want controversy. She's very sharp and knew what, that, in my recollection of just working with her, that I wish, you know, hindsight's 2020, but that COVID-19 had more impacts than we think. And, but I am, I have a strong support that the process, your policy was followed. And it looked different in the AR because the times were different. Had we not received the outpouring of responses? When we send a request out district-wide to the community and to all of our students and their parents on budget, we usually get about 4,500. And so I kind of gauged that, wow, seven, almost 1,700 or maybe 1,650 said something. I thought that was a good response. And then I wanted to know, well, were they present people in the school now? Did they actually reach beyond the school? And that was my first question in looking at the data. And they actually were more outside of the school than they were in the school, people that were associated at one time. And so, in looking at those supporting details of the data, while it didn't mirror the request of the municipality to have that be first, there was still support. And I was happy that Fairview, their responses came back overwhelmingly positive.
Well, and I guess, again, without, you know, seeing those things, you know, East High School, a Betty Davis campus or facility is an odd name. Is that what they were reacting to? Or were they reacting to the Betty Davis East High School? And what reasons, I mean, from an educational perspective, it just makes so much sense to attach, I mean, that was, I guess, I mean, it just, having her name attached to our most diverse high school makes so much sense to me. I guess I'm curious, what was their opposition to it? Did they feel that?
You know, Member Mitchell, I don't think we'll ever get to your specific questions in detail because they didn't share it.
They just said they opposed it and that was it.
No, they shared, right. She gave you the information about when, if not, what were the reasons. And they were, that they didn't want to lose the East identity was the primary reason, I think, that we saw, wasn't it? And if you, I mean, to me, Betty, I don't know. I mean, I think it's, it's difficult because of the way it was presented in the poll was a little bit, I don't think it ever proposed the Betty Davis East High School as an option, which retains that East identity. So I, you know.
All right, Member Mitchell, I'm going to go ahead. I've got another board member with their hand up. Member Hildy.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the process and discussion on the process. You know, as a board, we'll be able to pull it from non-action. If we want to amend something, we can do that. I think it's important to note, you know, one person did write in about the history of East Anchorage Thunderbirds as indigenous culture and that those strong ties to people there already. So when we look at, you know, this whole process is a little unusual in the first place. We could say, we want to rename a school to honor a diverse student population. We would cast a very broad net. We chose to do something differently for very good reasons. But it's very unique. The AR isn't really written for this situation. This is where we're at, and this is the point we're at. So I just encourage board members, we'll go through the process. If you want to make a motion to amend something, we can do that. And, or if not, well, then we'll, we can vote to table things, we can vote to amend, we can do lots of things. But just, we'll go through that process.
Thank you. And I know we are having the conversation right now. It is a non-action item today with, depending on the outcome, a potential action item in two weeks. Member Marsette, I see your hand raised.
I have a comment on this, but actually, my question is in the first part of the superintendent's update. I did go through all the emails that we received, and it is about 50/50. I mean, I'm not, I want to do whatever the community wants to do. And I support the community in that effort. But I do see 50/50 in the emails that were received. And I just went back through several of them just now, just to kind of confirm, there's a lot of them. But there are more about opening our school than there are about naming East High School after Betty Davis. And Betty Davis was a very close friend of mine. I took her back and forth for board meetings many times. And I do value the input that she's given to our community and what she's given to this community. So the process will happen, as Alicia Hildy has explained. And I'm sure that we'll have more discussions on this. But I do want to ask about, and actually, it's, and I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but it's our Director of Nursing. And, you know, we talk about going back to school. Is it safe to say that with more testing? And I mean, on every corner, it used to be that drugstore. Now it's COVID testing. I think that's a new motto. And I, I kind of think with all the new testing and the fact that people were having symptoms that they didn't even know about, that there were the same amount of people walking around with COVID-19 as there is today. But just because there wasn't as much testing and people weren't thinking, oh, it's just a cold or something, is that, is that an accurate statement?
Through the Board President, to Member Marsette, since I don't have that data, I can't say for sure. But we definitely have increased our testing capability significantly since July. In the beginning, we were only testing people after they had symptoms for two or three days. And then the tests were coming back negative. But what we didn't know back then was that it's key to test the first or second day of symptoms because that's a more accurate reading because your viral load is higher. So as we've progressed and learned so much more about this virus and increased our testing capabilities, our numbers have went up. But they, we have done quite a bit of testing and quite a bit are also coming out positive, which is expected.
Well, I will just say right now, with everything that we've done in preparation for what would have been a school start, I am in support of starting our schools as soon as possible back in classrooms. So I'm just going to put that out there publicly and say, Dr. Bishop, I support you. When we can go back to school, let's do it.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up in the queue. And so at this time, I would like to go ahead and continue working through our agenda. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, for the update. Next up is our consent agenda. And, Member Bellamy, if you will kick off the first motion. And I will be asking Katie to do a roll call vote, since so many of us are on Zoom today.
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve ASD memorandum. Numbers. I move to approve ASD memorandum, numbers, yes, I'm on the right one, number zero, three, zero, and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education.
That's our action items? We need to do our consent agenda first?
Oh, the consent agenda, I'm sorry. My apologies. I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of ASD memorandum number zero, three, two, the personnel report, and our executive and regular session minutes of August 18th.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Katie, if you could please do roll call for us.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
She thumbs up.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
President Michaelis.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
I don't know if we're going to do a screen share, but I do know that the consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. And so now we can move on to our action items. And Member Bellamy.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero, three, zero, and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development Migrant Education Program in the amount of $60,000 to purchase books and reading materials for distribution to eligible migratory children.
Second.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, nobody had signed up for public testimony on our action items. So at this time, are there any board member comments or questions on ASD memorandum zero, three, zero? Seeing none, Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote.
President Michaelis.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
So yes. Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
And Member Mitchell.
Yes.
ASD memorandum number zero, three, zero passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up.
I move to approve ASD memorandum zero, two, nine, the selection of Bezik Dersk Sizer Incorporated DBA, BBS Architects as the designer of record for the East High School Earthquake Repairs Project and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with BBS Architects for professional services in the amount of $174,097 for the purpose of a full building survey, field verification, and prioritization of all potential scope items.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions or comments on ASD memorandum zero, two, nine? Just as a point of clarification, the, the full motion, just to make sure that board members do see this before they vote, the part that reads additionally, the administration recommends the Anchorage School Board increase authority to execute future contract amendments to $950,000 if future amendment is anticipated for the remainder of the design and construction administration services that will increase the total design fees over the $500,000 mark. So before we voted, I just want to make sure that that was read on the record and board members knew they were voting on it. And seeing no comments or questions, Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote.
No, no.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
President Michaelis.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
ASD memorandum number zero, two, nine passes with seven yays and zero nays. And next up.
Next item, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero, three, one, and authorize the award of a term contract for the purchase of fleet fuel services for the district's use to Holiday Station Stores LLC for the period October 31st, 2020 through July 31st, 2022, with two additional one-year renewal option periods with an estimated district-wide annual usage of $546,000 for each fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any board member comments or questions on ASD memorandum zero, three, one? Not seeing any. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
President Michaelis.
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
ASD memorandum zero, three, one passes with seven yays and zero nays. And next item.
Uh, next item, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero, three, eight, the draft goals and guardrails outlined in this memorandum.
Second.
Do any board members have any comments or questions? Member Hildy.
I'll just comment that this is our draft goals to go back out to the community. Member Marsette's been working on this with her committee. So we welcome community feedback on these and they can be changed or revised or tweaked. So I look forward to this process.
Thank you. Not seeing any other board members. Katie, if you could please, Member Marsette.
Sorry, I'm not quick enough. I just want to say ditto.
All right. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Vice President Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Donley.
Yes.
Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Member Marsette.
Yes.
President Michaelis.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
ASD memorandum zero, three, eight passes with seven yays and zero nays. Onto the community. All right, that's the end of our action items. Next up, we have on our agenda, are the non-action items, is there anything that anybody wanted to pull for further discussion? Member Hildy.
Thank you. Could I pull ASD memorandum thirty-six and forty?
And Member Marsette?
Can you scroll down so I can see them? Is that possible? I want to pull, I want to pull the one on the school start update.
Okay.
Thirty-five. Oh, no, that's not it. Where is it?
Yeah, just item number one.
One, yeah.
Okay. All right. Got three items pulled. Here we go. We'll go ahead and start it off with the ASD School Start 2021 Task Force Update. And Star, you pulled it, so I'll let you start.
I think this has been really hard for everyone and I know how hard it is with the fear out there, but I have to agree with Dr. Bishop. You know, I don't know how soon we can get kids back in school now with the changes, but even at home, I see, and even with other kids, I see boredom. I see thoughts of suicide. I see grades just plummeting. It's not that I want to put our kids in an unsafe environment because I don't think that's what we're doing, but I think for the mental health and for the, and just for the continued health of our students mentally, everything I can think of, we have to get them back into school. Everything Dr. Bishop said, I'm seeing, I'm seeing it in my own family. I just hope that when the time comes, that the board will really consider how this is impacting our students. And yes, we want them to be safe and I believe we're doing all of that and above. And there's other schools doing this and we can get our kids back in school. And I think we have to look at the long-term effects of this. And it's not that I don't, it's not that I don't understand the risk for our teachers that they put out there, but there are options for everything. If you look at grocery store workers, if you look at nurses, they're all doing what they have to do. And I'm not trying to minimize anything for anybody, but I'm just saying as a school district, our job is to educate kids. And so we have to do what we have to do. And by golly, if you want me in your classroom all day to be there and I can be there, I'll be there because I will be where the kids are. So I just hope when the time comes, and if I'm not on this board, I hope the board really considers best for our kids. Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't really a question, it was more of a comment.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
I just had a, a follow-up with, to Star's comments. Dr. Bishop, I don't, I don't know that the board, we have not been, as a board, I don't know that we have not been supportive of, of, of the plan to get kids back. I mean, we, we, we do, we want that to happen as well. So the, the thing that kind of sticks with me though, is that 25% of our teachers who don't, won't go back, they have options, right? I mean, they, they, they have options. Can we run schools on 75% of our teachers? And how will we get around that? How, I, I, I just don't know. Not, not that it's.
Sure. That's a, a good question, through the President to Member Bellamy. We are, one of our groups is to have contingencies for not only substitutes, but also reassignments of people who are certificated, who would go to classrooms and teach. So we're doing our due diligence, that meeting the classroom need in the classroom is priority over other things and in the district and, and we're working to, to solve that. I don't know that 24% of people could, would choose that option today. I mean, you know, they might have chosen before. We've shared the numbers in regard to, we have had members who took retirement before they thought, you know, because they didn't want to go back, honored those as well as anyone who didn't feel like they could go back to work. And I would like, Matt Teifer, could you speak to that in regard to those that request when we do go back not to work? Can you just share that?
Yes, thanks, Dr. Bishop, through the President. The, and has been raised by the Teachers Association, what the district's response would be with respect to mid-year resignation, specifically whether there'd be action taken on a breach of contract claim through the Professional Teaching Practices Commission. And I have indicated to the association that the district would not have any interest in pursuing such a claim if the resignation in fact relates to a concern about returning to a work environment where they don't feel safe. So nor frankly, do I think the commission would have any interest in pursuing a, you know, a licensing restriction related to a bona fide concern about returning to a workplace that the, the employee is not comfortable to turn to. So I, I've made that clear to, in my communications with AEA leadership, that's, there's no intent to be punitive. That's not to say it wouldn't be disruptive to our operations. So there'd need to be a case-by-case determination as to the reason for the mid-year resignation, which is typical for our protocol in, in making a determination whether there should be a PTPC referral. So that process would be followed, but I can make that commitment to this, this board as I have to the association, that it, it, it's not the district's intent to be punitive if someone has that concern.
And that was just a, a Member Bellamy, a, a reach out from your original question, but again, all hands on deck. And, and I appreciate your public comment in regard to supporting kids going back. I want to share with this board that I have not felt the majority of the board say those things to me and give me that feedback. And so I do appreciate the comments made this evening. This is serious. We do have information about our children and their predicaments and it's FERPA information, it's HEPA information, but I can tell you that I believe kids will be better served in our schools, knowing, knowing at this time that the mitigation and the science behind that is more of a factor to our medical experts, that the masks, the distance, the hand washing and the routine. I would not say that it's easy and that it's going to be easy. We've found, and we do have children in schools now, we're doing our reading program and we've found as well with our sports, that it takes a constant reminder of everyone to be, create a habit. And we know that, even when we try to change our own habits, it's, it's work to do that, but it's, it's work that is well worth the benefits to children. And, and we want to support teachers in those efforts. And I do want to share that many, 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 many teachers have reached out heartbroken over the circumstances of their children and, and they are doing their best. Again, I don't want to say that it is a lack of effort. It is not. It is 10 times more difficult to do their job today as a teacher via Zoom, via virtual, than it was last year. It's not about efforts, it's not about will, it is about the outcomes and the reality of what's happening to our youth. Thank you.
Next up in the queue, I have Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of what Member Marsette had said and, you know, nobody has said, just go back to school and ignore science. Nobody's done that at any point. I want to thank Superintendent for working so closely with our state and local health authorities, always being right at the front of ever-changing data and new research that's coming out. This is an evolving pandemic, but the impacts on children, right? A child dying from COVID is not worse than a child dying from other harms that, that we're not imagining are happening, but that we know are happening, that you can't talk about for various reasons. But children are suffering in Anchorage and we don't get to compartmentalize all of that. It has to be a holistic consideration and keeping true to our mission, right? Why do we have schools? We are to educate children. If we're in school, that's what should be happening. And as a board, that's our responsibility to monitor that. So I thank the Superintendent for her work on that. I don't know how that can go, if it's some kids, if it's stepwise, if, you know, with, you know, we talked about the metrics for opening the whole district or opening up elementary, you know, but it doesn't necessarily have to be all of those things. So I thank you for all the people who are working to figure out that very complex way forward.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Holloman.
Well, this gets complicated pretty quickly. There definitely are people in the community that are saying, just open, it's safe, there's no evidence, et cetera. The feeling I get from most people is they don't feel like it's safe, they don't feel prepared to let their kids come back yet. And it, it is really difficult. Now, and I'll say that as a, someone that spent years in the classroom, you know that for a certain number of kids, school is the safest, cleanest, healthiest place they spend very much time. It, it's not simply that they learn things and they get smarter, it's their safe place. It's where there are rules and structures and they don't get hit, they, they get some food that is healthy. For a lot of kids, it's, it's a real bonus to be there in so many ways and for other kids, not. There's no doubt in my mind that there are children in this town suffering because of bad conditions at home and there's no way to know the exact number of that. But at the same time, we also have seen where COVID can be like a wildfire. And right now, we're in a spike up. We've had the longest stretch of new cases per day over 10 days. We just got the highest per day case we've had since this whole thing started. And, and there's a reality that our schools or our buildings are something like giant lungs, where they inhale in the morning with hundreds or over 1,000 kids. And they co-mingle for a bit. And then they exhale back into the homes and apartments and, and wherever kids are, are living. So the, the potential isn't just about staff or even just about our children. It's the potential for making COVID move through the whole town. And I don't think anybody is sure yet exactly how much of a vector schools will be in that case. But I, I do applaud that the Superintendent has laid out a plan that's got metrics. We can watch those, we can watch what's happening, we can kind of see what's coming. I think if we're going by those, then people will know in advance when we're approaching a time where we're going to go back and they can prepare for that. And I, I think that's as important as anything else, that, that we can't just suddenly say, two weeks off, we're good. And we have to be prepared to back away. We, we had a plan two times based on metrics. Both times, what was happening in the community derailed that. Everybody wants this to be over. I'd like to go see my mother. I'd like to go see my wife. I'd like to be able to spend time with my son. But our bubbles aren't normally enmeshed. So we stay apart from each other to that degree, so that one of us doesn't transfer it to the other. This is hard on everybody. But it would still be hard on everybody if we were back in school and kids started getting sick. It would actually be worse. So I, I would urge, I mean, we want kids back as soon as we can do it in a reasonable way. And it won't be risk-free. It won't be risk-free for kids, and it won't be risk-free for adults. No one's saying we wait until that happens. But we do have metrics out there, and I do hope we stick to them. Because they're based on, on logic. They're based on looking at what happens if too many people too close together when there's so many cases in the community. And, and it will be hard. But I do hope we stick to it. I do hope we look at ways of bringing groups, small groups back into the schools like we're doing with the reading groups. Athletics, I would say, is something of an experiment that made sense. Because again, you're working with small groups of students who've got some leverage over them. They want to be there. We still have had issues with getting them to obey the rules, even though we could make some clear sanctions about that. So we're experimenting and we're getting some kids back in there. It's not going all that well. It's going pretty well. But bringing a large number of kids back into the school building on a daily basis, to me, right at the moment, just looks like a bridge too far when things are clearly out of control in Anchorage right now. So I, I hope we stick to the plan we've got and, and stay strong with it. Thank you.
I don't see any other board members' hands up in the queue right now. And this is always going to be, you know, a topic at every meeting. And whether it's at meetings or our inboxes or our council meetings or, you know, our cross-sections of the community, you know, that we all talk to, this is going to continue to be a discussion. But it is good to hear everybody wants to do what's best for the kids. And the understanding that there is a lot more, you know, to the questions or the metrics being looked at. You know, we're looking at the broader child in the broader community. And just appreciate the conversation. Next up, Member Hildy, I believe you polled items three and four. We'll start with ASD Memorandum 036.
Thank you. Yeah, this comes from the Governance Committee. It's on community events and invitations. It, it's saying that if board members get invited to community events, you know, of course, we encourage people to go. And they kind of pay the fee yourself or submit a request for it to be paid out of the school board account. I just wanted to, you know, I don't like to wait until the week of if somebody wants to change something, but I don't plan to support it. I don't want, I think our salary fee covers this sort of thing. And I want every dollar going into the classroom. So I don't want to like spring that on people next week as a vote. I'll just put it out there now. And if somebody has discussion on it, that's great. But I just want to be open about my plan to do.
Are there any other board members with comments or questions on ASD Memorandum 036? Member Marsette?
I, I don't know if I heard, you're not going to support it, Alicia?
No, I mentioned that during governance, that because I, I just don't want any more money coming out of going to the classroom. But I, you know, there was support in governance, so we push it forward. And that's the appropriate thing to do for the full board to consider.
Well, and I'll just mention why this was brought forward anyway. And that was because as President, we're always approached with different things. And sometimes board members show up and sometimes they don't. And sometimes they have good reasons. And there was nothing in policy. And so we were really kind of, Katie and I were like, okay, well, what do we do with this? You know, what should we do? And so we just felt like a policy should be put in place, whether it gets amended or whatever. But we need, it's thanks to direct the Board President in, in helping her or him to make these decisions.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to ASD Memorandum 040, also which Member Hildy has polled.
Thank you. This is the one, yeah, I wanted to, I, I don't think we make motions to amend, but I wanted to know what the board thought on doing something more substantive. Like I, I would envision it as, and even from the start, the Betty Davis Leadership Academy. And I see little like third graders, you know, being mentored by communities and funneling like leaders when they come to ASD, to that school, where it's really a, an intentional act to build leaders in our community. We don't have that at the, you know, in a leadership-focused school. And I, I think it would be an excellent opportunity to do something beyond just putting a name on. Sometimes I, you know, I didn't know the Willard Bowman guy until this process and somebody emailed. Sometimes you can name something and the history just doesn't stay. But when there's an intentional part of it, when there's something more than that, and, and I think, I don't want to speak for Betty, but I think part of this is raising up like future leaders who can follow in her, you know, footsteps like that. And I, I would just be curious on your thoughts.
Are there any board members that have thoughts that they would like to share relative to, you know, Member Hildy's question or comment? Member Mitchell?
I, I love that sentiment. I think that's a really interesting idea. It's a program that would cost money to train people in and to implement. And it's a program that can be eliminated. And I, I mean, I really appreciate the thought behind it because it is universal across the district. And it's something that could really be empowering for our students. I just worry that it's not something that we may have capacity for. And again, it's, it's, there's a lot of potential impermanence there.
Thank you. I believe Board Member Bellamy has some questions.
Similar to what Member Mitchell said. And I guess just some clarification. Member Hildy, are you suggesting that? I'm not quite sure I'm following what you're suggesting. Are you suggesting that we name?
I would just be moving to change the name to the Betty Davis Leadership Academy instead of Betty Davis Elementary School.
Okay, assuming we go with an elementary school. Okay.
Or something else, but that's what I was thinking.
Okay. And, and that, that leadership part would be so Betty. It would be. And I guess we could do that whether it's a elementary or, or a high school. But going along with the Superintendent's recommendation, that would be the elementary school. If that is what we decide to do. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other comments or hands up in the queue. This will be coming back to the board in two weeks as an action item. And we can certainly continue the conversation then. Moving on, the second public testimony. I do not have the three people that had, were missed in the first round. I don't see them as being called in at this time. And so hopefully we can reach out to them and maybe get their written comments if they would like to submit them for us. Moving on to new business. So I've got a couple of things, and I apologize for not having them, you know, kind of out ahead of time. In our last, I'm going to, the first one I'm going to talk about is the, at our last joint meeting with the Assembly, we had talked about possibly moving the time to later in the day to make it more easily accessible to more of the public instead of the 10 to noon, which we have traditionally done. And so Chair Rivera and I, as well as Katie and Barbara, the municipal clerk, have gone back and forth on some potential options. And we looked at for the next two meetings, Monday, December 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the ASD Education Center. That's traditionally our meeting at the ASD. And then Monday, March 8th, 2021, from 4:00 to 6:00 at City Hall. Monday, March 8th does happen to fall, the Monday of spring break. But, you know, the Ed Center is still open and active during that time. We did clear that, and it works better for the municipality because that is traditionally the budget meeting that we have, and earlier in the month happens to be better. And so December 7th and March 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 were the proposed times. And I wanted to do a quick straw poll of the board to see if they would be in support of accepting those two dates and times. And so I'll just kind of do a quick rundown of board members. Just give me, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down, I suppose.
Say those times again?
4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Monday, December 7th and Monday, March 8th.
Can we start having meetings a little later in the afternoon? I mean, the municipal charter specifically envisions people being able to have ordinary jobs. And, you know, like a 4:30 or a 5 o'clock start time is much more conducive of complying with the intent of the charter. Our meetings have been creeping, creeping more and more into the earlier afternoons, more and more frequently, which makes it more and more difficult for people with ordinary employment to, to attend those.
And this is the point of this conversation. If, you know, this board would rather do something like 5:00 to 7:00 or something along those lines, that is the point of the occasion of moving it later in, you know, the day, knowing that 10 to 12 was, you know, you know, a concern of the community that was recently voiced. And so that's what I'm wanting to know. And so Dave, you're suggesting 5:00 to 7:00. Katie, you have your hand raised.
That's from Member Bellamy. Her
Thank you. Now I know. Member Bellamy?
Mondays, well, I can't do Mondays. Between 5:00 and 8:00, I can't. But I can catch up. I guess I can watch the tape later or check in.
Okay. Member Mitchell?
I, I think either of those will work for me, although the Monday, the first weekend of spring break, I traditionally, there's a, I, I, hopefully I would be back by 4:00 or 5:00. We have a longstanding family tradition that weekend.
Okay. Member Hildy?
I'm fine with it. I thought Crystal Kennedy mentioned they used to do that. And still, you just don't get a lot of people coming to this meeting, period. So in that case, I'm more inclined to do the thing that's more efficient to all the paid employees' time. But it's fine.
And Member Donnelly, you had no issue with the dates, but you were suggesting 5:00 to 7:00?
That, that's correct, Madam President.
Okay. Member Marsette?
I'm actually going to abstain because I only be there for one meeting and I won't be there for the other one. So whatever the board decides is fine with me.
Okay. Member Holloman?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. I will take that information and feedback and see what we can do and come back to the board at the next meeting and see where that one goes. But thank you for the feedback. And then the next item that I had is the filling of Member Marsette's seat. Wanted to take a look at the process and, you know, go through policy and all of that kind of stuff and start the conversation. One of the key components of it, however, is so we can either do 30 days before, during, or no later than 30 days after the vacancy of the seat. If we are to do it before the 30 days prior or any time prior to her last meeting, it does require a written notice from her saying that it is okay to advertise and move forward. So all of that is kind of predicated on one more letter from her. So I'm just letting her know that. And so I have some tentative dates picked out. But like I say, all of it is making sure we have that advance notice and approval. I know that a couple of people had, board members had asked about it. And so, Member Mitchell, you had questions? Which ones did you have? Where do you want to start?
Well, I guess, I don't know if we want to do things one at a time. But a question that I had is, you know, when we did this, when we rewrote this policy, and thank you, Member Hildy, for spearheading that, we did it to just streamline the process. Since then, the Assembly had their, they had to replace a member when Assembly Member Amy Damboski moved to a different position. And they intentionally chose a person who would not run for election and who could hit the ground running. And it made me think about the fact that, you know, originally, when we went, as we were approaching the process initially, we thought that the person that we pointed filled out the remainder of the term, but they don't. They only fill out those last few months until the following election. So it got me thinking about the fact that there is a learning curve when people join the school board. And does it make sense to have somebody who is appointed, is going up that learning curve, and is going to run in the next election? It seems like a lot. So I just wanted to ask my fellow board members what their thoughts are. Does it, because we could, going into this process, specify that we would like somebody who, I don't know if there's anybody available. There's 11 Assembly members, there's only seven board members. I don't know if we have, the Assembly had the good fortune that they had people available who were prior Assembly members and who could hit the ground running. I don't know that we are in that particular situation. But, you know, last time around, we did end up choosing somebody who really had a lot of knowledge of the district and didn't want to run for election. So I think that ended up in some ways working out quite well. So I just wanted to ask board members what they thought, if we want to maybe have that be a parameter or if we don't think it's a big deal for somebody to be filling a vacancy for the last few months, getting up to speed and also running a campaign at the same time.
Member Hildy, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. And those are the, one of the issues we, I, I mentioned to Member Vicalis. I sent her a summary of our policy and broke it down for this particular situation. That was a criticism I had when we did do filling Betty's seat temporarily, because we kind of talked about it at that meeting. And I thought we should really have clarified if we, as a board, only want to fill it for that temporary piece and to like be considerate of the people applying and their time. I, when you communicate that. I, I support doing that because I don't think somebody who's campaigning can, you know, be a really effective member for those three months. And we need somebody who can, you know, really help. So I would, I would absolutely be in favor of communicating that we're really looking for somebody, if that's what the board is inclined to do, but just for that temporary time.
And Member Marsette, you have your hand raised?
So I actually think that's a bad idea because every board member runs for reelection. Every board member, Andy Holloman is running for state senate right now. That is the democratic way. I mean, that's what they're supposed to do, to say that we're only going to fill this with past board members if they're out there. I think that's not always the best choice. And I think we need to go with the process we've had and support that process and leave this open and do the interviews and realize that, you know, all of us as board members, one time or another, have ran for reelection. And I don't think it's kept us from fulfilling our duties. I certainly don't think Andy would agree that it's kept him from his duties as a school board. But this process needs to be open and it needs to be open to everyone. And when we start being selective, I, I think that's the wrong way to go.
Member Donnelly?
I agree with Member Marsette for additional reasons, though. Let's say that four members of the board decide, well, we're only going to accept former people or people who already have done it. That, I think, is completely inappropriate because that's like pre-deciding ahead of time and saying that the other members don't even have a say in it. What the final outcome is. I think that's really a bad idea. I totally agree on to be open to anybody who wants to apply, who's eligible to apply and serve. And that if you, as an individual board member, want to state that your criteria is that, that's completely appropriate. I mean, if you want to announce that your criteria is, I'm looking for somebody who's not, doesn't want to run for the office and has some prior experience, that's reasonable, but it is not reasonable to try to utilize a majority of the board to dictate that policy to other members.
Member Mitchell?
Sorry, I saw other hands up before I put mine back in, so I thought I was later in the queue. Yeah, and I definitely respect what Members Donnelly and Marsette are saying. And I guess that isn't completely what I meant. Or I guess I should explain it a little bit more. I agree that Andy Holloman is able to run a campaign for a different office and Elisa Vicalis had thought about doing the same thing. I think it's a little bit different when you're an experienced board member, but when you're trying to get up to speed and you're running a campaign at the same time, I think that's a lot. And I, it, I'm not trying to dictate anything to anybody. I just wanted to raise it as something to consider. And Member Donnelly, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. I used that as an example. I'm not saying we would necessarily say that a prerequisite is that you have to have been a prior board member. But I do think that having, you know, again, Mr. Foster, when he was, when he stepped in, had not been a board member, but he had certainly been around the district for a few years, so he knew how things worked. And I'm not saying that would be a prerequisite either. I just think it's a lot of, it's a lot of work to come up to speed and be running a campaign at the same time. So it was just something I wanted to put out there for people.
Member Hildy?
My criticism was that at our last process through this, during that interview process, board members started saying, oh, I think I just want somebody for the interim. And if that's going to happen, it should be communicated ahead of time. I don't, we can do either way. It doesn't really make a difference to me, but I don't want it to be that we didn't talk about what we're really mean through this process. And if the board as a whole says there's a possible way we're going to do it, then don't waste people's time. I mean, that's what it comes down to. And I don't want new issues to be raised, just like at the last minute. That's not fair to the candidates. It's not fair to their families and the time they're spent. It's a lot of work those guys put into that last round. So just that we're respectful of the people who are applying.
Member Holloman?
I do want to say it was a goal in my life to be on the board long enough to hear Member Donnelly agree with Member and now feel like, I'm not sure what I have to live for now, but I'll think of something. I, I agree with what they said, though. We, this, this is supposed to be open to the public. And it should be open to the public and we're going to get a pool of applicants. We got about 40 last time. No two of them were alike. You could make some broad categories and put some people in them. I think people's feelings about certain qualities evolved as we looked at that pool and started to narrow it down. But very purposely going into it, I wanted to be ready to look at everybody that was willing to put their name in as a public board. I think we owe the public that. Yeah, we all probably may have some preconceptions, but I, I think it's fair as a board not to come to any conditions like that in advance. After everybody's names are in, we're starting to look at them. We may, we may have arguments or feelings like that, but I, I wouldn't want the board to even engage in discussion to where somebody sitting at home would go, well, there's not much point in me putting my name in there. It should be open to everyone and we should look at each person, starting off and start narrowing it down. I think that's how it's meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask Board Member Hildy a quick question. As somebody who is Chair of the Governance Committee and who has, you know, gone through this policy and, you know, interpretation and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And I don't know, do you have it up in front of you?
Yeah, I'm just playing it up, but I probably have it memorized.
9223, it's the last sentence of paragraph one. And it says, "Under no circumstances shall the incumbent participate in the deliberations or voting process in the selection of the incumbent's successor." And so I want to have Star's voice a part of it to the extent that it's allowed by policy.
Yeah, so she can help pick her, her person. I think she knows that, right?
I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I want to make sure I'm, I want to make sure I am interpreting correctly when it's.
Yeah, I do. I'm just envisioning what we went through the last, where there's only six board members participating in the panel. So that is the correct thing. You don't get a vote on your, your replacement.
I didn't know if conversations like this count as deliberations on.
Oh, I'm, well, I don't think this is going to be our norm. I'm, you know, I, I think the deliberations will come when we are doing the interviews and yeah, I guess I'm not concerned right now.
Yeah, and actually, and my, my bad, because I didn't realize that was in there, I guess. But, you know, one of the problems we had last time selecting, and of course, we didn't have the board member with us. The position was being replaced, was that it was tied and we didn't have anybody for a tiebreaker. And I guess, I guess I'm kind of sad that I don't get to participate in that process. I'm sorry, this is still very raw with me. And the other thing I did want to mention is that this isn't a couple of months, it's a year and four months that this board would be serving. So it's not like they're going to be on there for six or seven months. They are going to be on there for a while.
Member Hildy?
No, they'll just be on there till the general election. And then they, the, on the ballot will appear a fourth board member position for the remainder of Star's term of one year. So that's from state statute.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought they would be through the term.
We were confused too. That's why I had to do the work to figure it out.
So clearly we have more conversations, you know, to have. And as I had mentioned, you know, in order for us to advertise it on the leading edge of it, you know, the 30 days prior or to start that process ahead of time, it will require Member Marsette's written approval to do that. And so until, you know, that gets submitted, I hesitate to put dates out there to set an expectation until that process. We're following our steps in order. And so appreciative of the three-month lead time, but we want to just follow our process. And as soon as we have it, you know, you know, laid out and nailed down in terms of timing, it will get out to the community. You know, so that that can be done. And so were there any other board member comments or questions on the board vacancy topic at this time? Member Bellamy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer died.
No, it's, it's good.
Different perspective as a person who went through the board's process. It was long and it took all day. And I'm, so I'm not sure if there's a way to maybe not take, put it all in one day. If you have 40 people, split it up. I just think that keeping people hanging around all day, well, it may be a moot point because of COVID, but we may be doing a different kind of process. So it did take, it did take a long time, but I thought the process worked. And so and thanks for the clarification on the term, because I originally thought it was to finish out Star's term, but it's only to finish out, go to the next election. So the person for Star is only going to be serving from January 5th, well, 12th or whatever date until the election in April, correct?
Till May, it's after they certify it. So it's like mid-April, give or take, I guess, about a four-month term.
And not to mention if Andy gets elected, that's another story, sorry.
That's very true. There is that wild card out there. It might be filling two seats, which will just, you know, that much more. So and so we'll see where that goes. Member Hildy?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that last time we kind of voted privately. It is supposed to be a public vote. So just for board members to be, you know, aware of that, you know, it's going to be a public vote. If your friend's running and you gotta vote against them, they're going to know. So just, just for comfort level people to know that. And then I agree with Margot on scheduling. If you do 10 people for this hour or something like that, just to, it was a very long process. And but it was good, but we could, we could set some schedule or something.
Yeah. All right, that was all that I had for new business. I did get an email from Member Holloman. Is that something you wanted to discuss now or was that answered during the course of the meeting?
A little bit of both. It's something that could come up in governance as a start. And if it can be referred to governance to start there and then come to the next meeting, that would be okay. This dealt with the, the, putting the board on record as saying that we did not want the district to take action if a, someone quit because of concerns about COVID. If their job assignment changed to where they're meeting closely with people. And before I'd heard that the district wouldn't do that, but HR Director Teford kind of put himself on the record as saying we wouldn't be doing that. I still think it's appropriate for the board to consider it, but it could come in committee first and then come to the board at our next meeting.
Alicia, I will go ahead and forward you the language. And maybe that can come up at, you know, your next Governance Committee meeting. And we can have a conversation there. Member Bellamy, did you have a comment or question or was Katie's hand just not taken down yet?
No, I had, I did, I had a question on, and I don't know if it's even appropriate, but regarding the, our seats on the AASB board and how Star's, Member Marsette's resignation might impact that? Because I think both of them were just elected last year, right? Or re-elected last year.
I was only elected for one year and so nominations can be submitted in November or ahead of time.
So that deadline is October 9th?
Okay, then you can submit October 9th, but my term will end in November when they elect new board members.
So the question to the board would be, do we want to submit a new name from our board to the AASB nominations committee to have somebody from our board fill that seat at the November annual meeting of AASB? Member Mitchell?
Well, I know there are several people on our board who feel pretty strongly that ASB, that ASD should have more than one voice on that board since we are by far the largest district in the state. So I guess I would encourage somebody else to step up if they're interested.
Just Member Bellamy, I am interested, but I would like to have another chat with Star, Member Marsette and Mitchell.
So one of the things we're going to run up against is this is our only public meeting in which to do, you know, either a nomination or a, you know, straw poll vote that says that's okay to be submitted. And so I don't know how you want to handle that. Member Marsette?
This is also the deadline for new resolutions if we were going to submit them to ASB. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Member Hildy?
I'll give a very rough straw poll of if there's somebody who wants to do it, I support that person doing it. So good, good, good on you. So I, I can't imagine we got a long list of people who've got, you know, so that, that's my, my vote there.
I would echo that sentiment. Member Mitchell?
I would echo that as well. And I know, Member Donnelly, that this was a big concern of yours. So I just want to see if you might be interested in putting your name in the ring. But I guess I would say if Member Bellamy is interested, maybe we can just say that, you know, if she decides to pursue it, that we are okay with that. And if anybody else wants to throw the, you know, I, I think we could maybe say this evening, if there's a couple of people who are interested, that we're fine with whichever one decides. I don't know. Is that appropriate?
Does it need an official on the record nomination? Does it need that? I mean, does AASB require that from their nominations process?
Yes, it does need to be official. They do have to fill out a form and it does have to be submitted.
All right, so Member Hildy?
If Member Donnelly is interested, I'm fine us figuring it out. If he's not interested, then I'll move to just nominate Member Bellamy. And if she changes her mind, I understand, but we could at least get it on the record.
Member Donnelly, did you want to?
I would happily support Member Bellamy. I, I've done my time with this particular organization.
Member Hildy?
All right, I move that the Anchorage School District School Board supports the nomination of Margot Bellamy to the AASB Board of Directors.
Second?
I got a first, I got a second. Making this quick, is there any opposition? All right, by unanimous consent, that motion passes. I hope that works, Katie.
I will include it in the minutes. It'll be good.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. School Board Administration comments. Anybody have any last, final thoughts they'd like to share for the night from the school board or the administration? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. So critical race theory has a lot of serious concerns expressed against it in academia. And, and I'm not as familiar with how it applies to education. So that's why I thought it was important to have a definition of it earlier in the meeting. If it's going to be utilized to develop an equity program. And so the, the author that the, the cited earlier, Gloria Ladson Billings, from her article, "Towards a Critical Race Theory of Education", actually defined it. And I had asked the staff to define it, but she actually defines it in that article that she wrote as, quote, "Critical race theory is a radical critique of both the status quo and..." status quo and purported reforms." In the article, they disparage the Civil Rights Act and civil rights laws. They challenge the notions of neutrality, objectivity, colorblindness, and meritocracy. I find the challenge of meritocracy as a value to be particularly concerning to an academic institution, Madam President, because we fundamentally reward merit and hard work. The, one of the troubling things to me as an attorney is, in the article, Gloria Ladson Billings asserts that American society, democracy, which is American society, is based on property rights rather than on human rights. And I, as an attorney, think that's just fundamentally inaccurate and the opposite of what our founding documents, which envisioned that our human rights are a direct gift from God and not from government. So they certainly don't anticipate that our property comes from God, anticipate that our fundamental human rights come from the supreme being. So I think that assertion is fundamentally inaccurate. And finally, it advocates, or she advocates, creating your own reality theme. And in reading the book that, that we were all given, White Fragility, that's a theme that runs through that book, of white fragility. By redefining generally accepted terms and creating your own themes, you can deal in alternate realities. And that's very concerning, because these alternate realities are not based in actual fact. Even in this article, the author recognizes that most of this is done through storytelling and not through actual academic analysis. And if that's going to become the basis for Anchorage School District policy, that's concerning, and I'd really like a fuller analysis of the appropriateness of that.
Member Hildy.
Yeah, I was also surprised seeing that in the presentation. My, I guess, assumption was that it was just pulling those measurement tools as independent of the theory, but I would not see our district adopting or supporting that particular theory without, you know, board input on that. So if my understanding is correct, and they're just using measurement tools that happen to be part of that, but are also independent measurement tools, I'm comfortable with that. But if there was a movement toward that, I would want to know about it. So I agree.
Member Holloman.
Different topic completely. I just wanted to voice support for what the superintendent's done in guiding the district so far. Emotions are high about it and concerns high about it. And I think the decision about whether, how we resume and when we resume is very tough. It's, it's a very large district, it impacts people in so many different ways. So far, I think we've done well, and I, I look at the decisions that have been made for Alaska and have been made for Anchorage in particular, and they've been tough. It's affected everybody's life in negative ways. But it's not lost on me that if you want to look at statistics, we are among a small handful of the best places to be in the United States right now in terms of health and safety, in terms of being able to go about your life to some degree with minimal or very low risk of contracting a disease. I don't think it's just happenstance, I think it is the result of the actions that have been taken. And a lot of people said at the very beginning, at the outset of this, that if the steps we take are successful, it will look like they were extreme. And if they're not successful, it'll be completely out of control. We're still in control of it, although this week looks a little, a little shaky, but, but it's still in control. We have a fire that's contained at this moment. But I know there's been huge pressure and huge public opinion pushed in every direction at the superintendent. I think you've weighed out the reasoning well, and I just hope we continue in that way. I know everybody wants kids back in school. If for no other reason, then it just works back. Everybody that's going through this knows that distance is good for some things, but it's not good for everything by a long shot. And for a whole lot of kids, it just doesn't work very well at all, especially for our younger kids. So we want to get them back there, but we, we can't compromise their health, especially when there's a potential for the impacts to health lasting years and years, as opposed to just being a cold or an episode they get over. So I, I support everything from the original cancellation of district-affiliated travel back in the spring, the delay of ASD going back for a week after spring break. After that, decisions got made more on a city and state level for a while. But I supported the superintendent's decision to start back slightly delayed from our normal date, and the decision to put that off when the numbers changed. I had a lot of concerns about the October start date, but again, when the numbers changed, I think we followed our plan. And I think we still have to do that, that we, we have to make a plan by numbers and then stick to it, and it's not as easy as it sounds by a long shot. But I do appreciate it, thank you.
Next up, Member Mitchell.
I'd like to echo what Member Holloman said, I very much appreciate the deep thought that's gone into operating the district. I appreciate all of the work that everybody's done in terms of working through what it's going to take to go back as safely as possible. And it is, there are so many competing issues here, and as, I believe that Member Hildy has a master's degree in public health or public policy, there, you know, you have to weigh the competing pluses and minuses. And I agree with Member Holloman that we want to keep kids as safe as possible, but it is a fact that keeping them out of school is compromising their safety as well. We know that mental health is suffering greatly, we know that kids are in really horrific situations and are safer in schools, so we are balancing all of that. And will we be able to avoid any kind of, you know, when we do go back, hopefully, you know, in the not-too-distant future, will we be able to avoid any transmission? No, will we be able to avoid any, you know, it's, it's a trade-off. It's, it's weighing one set of risks against another set of risks and doing what is perceived to be the less risky route. And I, I do hope that, you know, it's, it's just tough. I mean, you know, if you'd asked me six or eight weeks ago, I would have said we should absolutely get back as soon as possible, and then the cases start rising. And anyway, I really, really appreciate all of the analysis and all of the long meetings and reconsiderations of all the different conditions and, you know, everybody in the district from the top down. And hopefully, we'll get through this without, with minimal damage due to staying out longer and due to starting too soon, and it's a delicate dance in balance.
I want to say thank you to all of the board members for their participation tonight, the administration for all of the information and the guidance and conversation tonight. I want to thank the community for calling in and giving their, you know, public testimony and their written testimony, and to all of those that are watching and participating in their own ways. Our next meeting is two weeks from now, October 20th. Between now and then, there's a lot going on. There is going to be a governance meeting, a communications committee meeting, Council of Great City Schools is having their annual conference. There's just a lot going on. Even before, right before our next meeting will be Finance Committee. So we've got a lot of work going on. October 15th is also, you know, the next update from the superintendent on, you know, where we are as a return to school. So I just, I encourage everybody to continue to stay engaged, keep engaged, you know, and, you know, keep looking and working for those solutions, you know, as we move forward and go forward. Margot, you have your.
Oh, just a shout out to our principals for October is National Principals Appreciation Month. And I appreciate the, the information that was in the ASD Connect and on the website. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, Dr. Bishop, did you have any last, final comments before we closed it up?
No, Madam President, thank you, I've spoken enough, thank you.
All right. Everybody have a wonderful night, look forward to, you know, connecting with everybody as we continue to move forward on doing what's best for kids. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.